Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Buenas tardes and welcome today. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, 5:00 p.m. We'll call this regular board meeting to order. Buenas tardes y bienvenidos a todos. Buenas tardes, es el 10 de octubre 2023. Son las 5 de la tarde y vamos a empezar nuestra reunión. Queremos empezar para preguntar si hay alguna persona que necesita interpretación. Tenemos a intérpretes en esta tarde para poder ayudar. If you need or in need of Spanish language interpretation, we do have that available. If you do need that, please raise your hand. Si necesita algún intérprete, puede levantar la mano y aquí tenemos a nuestros intérpretes para que los puedan ayudar. Este servicio está disponible gracias a nuestros diferentes departamentos. La señora Rodríguez y su equipo gracias por estar con nosotros. Y hoy seguimos celebrando el mes de la herencia hispana. Queremos celebrar a todos nuestros estudiantes y familias que se identifican como hispanos para celebrar la diversidad aquí en nuestro distrito que estamos celebrando el mes de la herencia hispana. Y hoy tenemos una presentación especial para que tenemos aquí en representación del mes de la herencia hispana. Entonces hoy celebramos, seguimos celebrando el mes de la herencia hispana que termina en esta semana, pero celebramos con todos nuestros estudiantes y familias de diferentes países que estamos celebrando en este mes. So, as we continue to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, just thought I'd add a little Spanish into our meeting this afternoon and welcome all of our families as we continue to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month for all of our many diverse families who come from many different countries from across Latin America and Spanish-speaking countries. And so, we continue to celebrate. And I know several of our schools have had some type of event celebrating the different cultures. And so, we're grateful to be able to have that here in our district. So, with that, I'll go ahead and continue to read our board norms and protocols as we do at every board meeting. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us today, whether you're in person or online. Bienvenidos a todos y gracias por estar con nosotros en esta tarde para nuestra reunión de la junta directiva de aquí de Kansas City, Kansas. Y les damos la bienvenida a todos y de nuevo felicidades a todos nuestros estudiantes. With that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we continue, and I failed to mention, but thank you, we also do have interpretation available in other languages tonight. So unfortunately, I do not speak a different language. But if we have other language speakers in attendance tonight, if you need interpretation, please raise your hand. We do have interpreters available this evening. If you do need that service, we will have them here for a portion of the night while we need them. So, thank you for joining us as well tonight. Now, I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's regular agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll jump right into our agenda. First, agenda item, our awards and recognition this evening, again, in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. Hopefully, you've had some time to look at the art display that's in the back of the boardroom. And I believe it will be up for a little while longer after tonight's board meeting as well. So you'll have some time to come and check it out if you have not. So I'd invite Ms. Elizabeth Burns to the podium. She helped bring this to our boardroom tonight. And will talk to us a little bit about the art display and what the students did. Again, I do just want to recognize all of our different families and students, the diverse students that we serve here in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. 60%, nearly 60% of our students identify as Latino Hispanic, which is great to see from all different countries from across the world. And so, we celebrate with you as we celebrate the end of Hispanic Heritage Month coming up this week. So thank you to all of our schools that celebrated in some fashion. I was able to attend a few different events throughout the district, and so it was great. So, Ms. Burns, thank you for joining us tonight and for bringing this art with us today.
Yes, thank you for having me. Each year, our students participate in some Hispanic Heritage Month activities in their schools. The art teachers create lessons that immerse the students into the culture. This happens at all grade levels across the district. So the display that you see is a sampling of what our teachers engage our students in. And so, the schools that are represented are TA Edison, which is actually up at the front, and the collaborative banner that you see of the Sugar Skulls. And then, in the back, we have Bannaker Elementary, Emerson Elementary, Frank Gresham, John Fisk, Mark Twain Elementary. And then, we have Arrowhead Middle School, Central Middle School, Eisenhower Middle School. And then, actually outside, on the first table that you see to the right, is a mosaic that was done by the Advanced Art Studio class at Schlegel High School. And it will probably be up for about two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. And thank you to all of those students who participated in putting this and bringing this to our boardroom to make our boardroom very colorful. I love it. I love different colors. And so, I definitely appreciate all the colors and colorfulness that we have in our boardroom today. Thank you for that. Next on our agenda, I will hear a brief presentation regarding one of the district's partners that we've been partnering with for a while now. Bike Walk KC is a local nonprofit here in Kansas City. And I believe we have Ms. Laura Fox with us this evening, who will join us and share briefly about some of the programs Bike Walk offers and the partnership that they have with the district and some of our schools. Board, I believe you should have a handout in front of you regarding Bike Walk. And I believe Ms. Rachel Russell participates on the board of Bike Walk. So definitely knows the importance of the work that they do. So, Ms. Fox, thank you for joining us this evening, and the floor is yours.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Laura Fox. I'm the Director of Education at Bike Walk KC. I'm going to just give you really quickly, like Mr. Lopez said, a brief overview about the state of walking and biking in USD 500. So first off, some of you may be familiar with our organization. But just to cover the basis, we are the Kansas City Metro Active Transportation Nonprofit. And our mission is to redefine our streets as places for people to build a culture of active living. Founded in 2010 by two guys named Eric after a BBC report came out that ranked Kansas City as the worst city to bike in. We have about 30 employees, half are full-time, half are part-time. And there are several other active transportation organizations, you know, regionally and nationally. But what I think makes us different is the fact that we have a very robust advocacy presence. And we work with decision-makers to make walking and biking better for everyone. Our community planning brings together city officials and local residents to create plans for streets that enhance the quality of life. We operate and maintain the bike share system with bikes not only in Kansas City, Missouri, but also Johnson and Wyandotte Counties in Kansas. And finally, our education team. We help create a foundation of knowledge through a wide range of classes, programs, and events for adults, youth, neighborhood leaders, and transportation professionals. So this is what I like to call our arc of programming. Almost two-thirds of the programming does happen in Missouri. However, the remaining Kansas programming is about a 40-60 split between Wyandotte and Johnson Counties. We prioritize free programming at urban core school districts with schools with a Title I status. So our four safe routes to school programs are: We have pedestrian safety and walking school bus programs. These are where students learn how to navigate crosswalks, streets, parking lots, and sidewalks on foot. Our bicycle lessons and safety training program. Blast is a primer for students to gain an understanding of how to safely operate a bicycle in a variety of situations. The following goals are improved bicycling handling skills, proficiency of basic traffic skills, identification and avoidance of hazards. Our youth maintain your ride is where students learn basic bicycle mechanical skills with daily projects. Small class allows for individual instructor training to ensure concept comprehension. Students who successfully complete the program have a chance to earn a bike of their own to keep. Our bike club. This program encourages youth to explore their neighborhood while building their physical stamina and peer network through weekly group rides. When appropriate, we do try to pair an advocacy opportunity by having the students conduct a walk audit and presenting the findings to school or city staff. We have also invited elected officials or other people in a position of leadership to ride and engage with the youth. We, much of our early work in Wyandotte County was around arrival and dismissal observations. So we did a lot of technical assistance. This past summer, we began using an app called Fulcrum. This is a data collection tool that we use on walk audits to assess the status of the streets, sidewalks, and intersections. This allows us to share this information either in a report or in its raw form for any stakeholders to use as they see fit. So by the numbers, USD 500 students make up about 12% of the students that we serve. Almost a quarter of the helmets that we give away go on USD 500 students' heads. And while it's not a primary focus of our programs, we end up teaching kids how to ride. We average about an 80% conversion of nonriders to riders through our Blast program. And USD 500 students comprise about 10% of the new riders that we release to the wild. So via our youth maintain your ride classes, about 14% of our bikes go to the USD 500 youth. And then, you can see at the bottom, we have engaged 24 walking school buses throughout the years. And one thing I kind of want to also mention here is some of the other efforts that have been happening in Wyandotte County. There's been some great grassroots efforts to increase the culture and presence of bicycles on the road. Bikes are a really easy thing to look at and be like, ooh, shiny object, that's great. But biking also ultimately helps pedestrians on the street. So infrastructure that goes down, that calms our roads, makes the roads seem more narrow, but also allows space for cyclists, increases the safety for pedestrians as well by putting them further away from moving traffic. The very last note that I want to end on is that every time we have come to a KCK, to a USD 500 school, the teachers have been supportive, they've been enthusiastic and welcoming, they've done whatever is possible to help the program be successful. Christine is a great example of that. And she allowed us to come in and do a train-the-trainer with the USD 500 elementary PE teachers where we kind of imparted, you know, the basis of what each of our courses means and asked them to, you know, try the courses with us. We got them on bikes, we got them going through signaling and stopping and starting and all the basics so that they could understand what the kids are going through, but also understand how they could help support our program better. So that's what's in front of you, is kind of a little review of the day when we went out and did that bicycle lessons and safety training for them. So, this is my contact information. If you have any further questions, I'm readily available. Again, thank you for letting me present tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. And I do just want to shout out Ms. Christine Sharonberg, I believe is how you pronounce her name, who's a physical education instructional coach and who really participates in the program. That's who Ms. Fox was referencing. Thank you both for the work you're doing and to all of our schools. Thanks for being here with us, Ms. Russell.
Thank you again for coming and presenting. I appreciate the work that you do each and every day to ensure that transportation doesn't just look like a vehicle, but also can be a bike or can be pedestrians. The one thing that I just wanted to add is that, or to invite each of you, board members and anyone else that would like to see the program in action in Wyandotte County, specifically in KCK. I believe it's October 16th, correct me if I'm wrong, 10:15 to 11:00. Quandero Elementary is wrapping up the final series of their biking bicycling class. And so, you all are invited to come and see the class in action. And sorry, if you want to share anything else about what this last class will be, feel free to.
Yeah, that's the class where the kids put everything that we've taught them together. So they've learned a lot. And then, we're asking them not only to, you know, pair physical ability with, you know, a lot of this upper, you know, level learning of how do I interact with traffic? How do I anticipate when I need to stop and start? Very much some of these skills that we use when we get behind the wheel. And so, it's really great to see these kids put it all together. They have a ton of fun. And yes, please, we invite anybody to come and watch and see the program in action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And ma'am, are you able to share this with our mayor and city commissioners? Because bike riding, I think is beautiful, but some of the sidewalks in our cities are so horrible that maybe if you could share with them, then we might be able to get them to do something to work on the streets so the kids can ride it on the sidewalks. But there was a grant that came from the state. And I know on my block, they did the best side of the street and the sidewalk that was the worst, they did nothing to. So I didn't know if you were sharing with them. Because excellent program, but it would be nice if the kids really could ride the bikes on the sidewalk and not be in the street, especially the younger ones.
Right, yeah. We share with ever, whoever comes and listens and watches. And we've done a couple of walk audits with some interns who were working with the mayor's office not too long ago. And they helped present findings to the mayor. And so, we take those opportunities when we can get them, and yeah.
I will say, Ms. Page, the Unified Government, they just, I think they just got the grant here in the last three to six months to reinvigorate the safe routes to school. Pre-pandemic, it was a program that went really strong. And so, their commitment to improving the sidewalks as well as extending to, you don't necessarily want people riding their bikes on the sidewalks, but how do we better utilize the road? And 47th and Mission is a great place to see where that intersectionality is happening.
Well, I only said that because you're not going to put a kindergartner in the street.
Yeah.
So you'd like for them to have a sidewalk to ride on. So I get that.
Yep, okay.
That's all I'm saying. You're not going to put babies out there.
Yep, and we have work to do. Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Fox. Right, we will continue with our agenda. Next on our agenda item is Agenda Item 3, our Community Comments Section. Again, just a reminder, if you would like to give comment, please contact Ms. Leslie Smith later than Monday at noon the day before the board meeting to sign up. You have three minutes to speak. You may speak to the board. And you have three minutes. Please state your name. And before you leave, make sure that Ms. Smith has your contact information. First on our agenda, I would call to the podium Ms. Helen Hockenson.
Good evening. I'm Helen Hockenson. I live at 6453 Cernits Road, and I also own a home at 419 South 81st Street. I'm here to talk about our public library service. Public libraries are of utmost importance to me, and I hope that you all feel the same way. My first experience using our public library was, I don't remember what I was doing, but I was at the checkout desk and the gentleman helping me, we were chatting, as you do. And it turns out, he was working, he was actually from the IT department, and he was covering the checkout desk. And I feel like that's a waste of his skills and his talents. And so, that kind of lodged in my mind as something that was not probably the best. So then, I went on, living my life, doing my, what I do, like everybody. And I attended the last commissioner meeting where they raised our taxes significantly. And so, I was lying awake in bed at night. And I got up at 1:00 in the morning and I watched the library board meeting. The disparity between the technology here and the technology available to our library board is appalling. So, we had an over two-hour meeting that probably would have been 40 minutes if they had had appropriate technology support, which goes back to the IT guy working the checkout desk instead of supporting the library board through the work he was hired to do. During the meeting, they, the library board was voting on whether to increase taxes to Piper, Turner, and Edwardsville. And someone from, I don't know who it was, I didn't go back and re-watch the meeting, but someone from USD 500 stated that those communities were already being served by the library through the mobile libraries. I happen to know that the mobile library service has been suspended for a very long time. It's been a very long time since all four buses were running. They're sitting vacant. At this time, their delivery service only to 11 sites, which are a combination of daycares and assisted living, which is great. But when the library board is voting to raise taxes on communities that they claim are being served by mobile libraries when they're not, that information should have been corrected during that board meeting. That information should have been corrected. Library staff in 2019, the Friends of the Library, paid for all 104 library staff to attend KLA. Obviously, they didn't attend the whole conference, but they were able to attend part of it if they wanted. And that's great. I think staff training is of utmost importance. In 2020, February of 2020, the library director, the assistant director, and 10 library staff members attended PLA.
Ms...
Are my three minutes up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we are at time. But I do want to say thank you for joining us tonight. And we will have a member of our staff reach back out to you to follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today.
Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, did she have anything written down that she could share? I know she read what she had, she didn't get a chance to finish it all, but could we see a copy?
So I'll follow up with her and get the information. Yeah, I'll follow up with her.
Thank you. And next on our agenda is we get to hear from our Foundation of Excellence. And Ms. Crystal Watson is coming to the podium to talk to us about some of the great things happening with our Foundation of Excellence. Thank you, Ms. Watson, for joining us. And very excited to hear about upcoming events and things that you have planned for the community and district, including our We Believe campaign, which is a critical part of the work that you do and how we support our students and staff. While you're pulling that up, I'm just trying to make sure that you have the time to pull up your presentation.
Thank you so much.
But while we're talking about that, I do encourage anyone who is able to participate in the campaign this year that we have annually to contribute in whatever way is meaningful for you. I know I will be contributing to the campaign as
Oh my gosh.
board member and as a resident of this community because I know how important it is for our staff. So whatever is meaningful for you, I'm sure the Foundation would appreciate it. And so would our staff and students, who at the very end of the day are the ones who receive those funds for different projects and initiatives. So, Ms. Watson, thank you for joining us, and I'll... and initiatives. So, Ms. Watson, thank you for joining us, and I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you. And to the Board of Education, and to the attorney and Dr. Stubblefield, good evening to you and to everyone here and everyone out there in virtual land.
He feels alright.
Again, I am Crystal. I'm sorry, did I forget something?
You feel, you just not your perky self today.
I am. I'm gearing up. I'm trying to soften it.
It was like you very quiet over there.
So that it doesn't blow you away. Again, I'm Crystal Watson. I am the executive director for the KCK School Foundation for Excellence. And I'm here to talk to you about several things going on within the foundation. So just to give you a quick update. And for those of you who do not know who the foundation is, our mission is to serve all students and provide support to enhance their educational experience. Our vision is to embrace, empower, and assist the students of Kansas City Public Schools to excel. And right now, we are currently doing a soft launch of our I Believe campaign. We believe that you can make the difference. And so as you see in front of you are barcodes that you can quickly take your phone out, and you can pose that camera right to the one-time donation. Or if you are an employee of the district, we are asking all employees and leadership to participate in our payroll deduction program, where you are asked to just give $5 per pay period. Listen, folks, that is less than a McDonald's meal. So I'm just asking you to sacrifice one fast food a month to give to the foundation. We are looking for, our goal is to meet 25% of our internal, this is our internal campaign. So we're just looking for 25% of our staff and leadership to contribute. And our goal this year is to raise $45,000. This is the first time that we have done a full-fledged internal campaign within the district. So I'm hoping that everyone will participate. And guess what? It starts with leadership. It starts with you, Board of Education. So I greatly appreciate you considering giving that donation. All right. What we have coming up is the Partners for Excellence. Join us for breakfast. This will be held at the KCK Technical Education Center on Friday, October 27th, at 8:00 a.m. From 8:00 to 8:30 will be breakfast, and the program will start promptly at 8:30. So we hope that you can join us. We are going to acknowledge the partners that we have within the district and showcase who we are, not only as a foundation, but who our district is with our vendors and community at large. So, Board, you should have received an invitation already. If you're not, please let me know. But we are inviting you to attend it. We'd love to see your beautiful faces at a wonderful table at the tech center. All of the community is invited, as well as staff. So again, there's a barcode. You can RSVP, just whip that phone out and point that camera to the QR code, and it'll take you right there to RSVP. All right. What we have coming is the Reasons to Believe Alumni Celebration. Can I get a hand clap? Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. I told you I was gearing up. So, we are here to announce who the winners are. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Here we go. Announcing our 2023 honorees. Dr. Alicia Dickens, Sumner Academy, Class of 1981. Calvin Thompson, Wyandotte High School, Class of 1982. Cecily Reeves, FL Schlegel, Class of 1994. Charlotte Davis, Wyandotte High School, Class of 1967. Shanita Madison, Washington High School, Class of 1987. Bishop Daniel Jordan, Sumner Academy, Class of 1951. Ernest E.J. Jackson, J.C. Harmon, Class of 1999. Javel Rome, FL Schlegel, Class of 2003, 2003. Jessica R. Smith, Sumner Academy alum, Class of 1999. Jill Hall, Wyandotte High School, Go Bulldogs, Class of 1982. You gotta do that Bulldog chant. All right. Dr. Kira Drew Gilmore, Sumner Academy, Class of 2008. Pamela Smart, Sumner Academy, Class of 1981. Those are our 2023 educator honorees. So for the first time, we have added a category called the educator category. And so those are folks, they are still acknowledged for their accomplishments, but they are currently working in K through 12 systems. And so that was, there are three of those, and we'll announce those at, on our website. But you can go to our website, get all this information on the kckssfoundation.org. Thank you so much, Board. Do you have any questions? I hope to see you there. You should have gotten an invite. If you did not, those will go out immediately to make sure that we have you present for that event. That also will be at the KCK School, Kansas City, Kansas Community College Tech Center. Any questions? It looks like Ms. Drew has a check. She is starting us off. I will politely take that check right now.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, as you're coming forward. We appreciate you and the work that you do. And again, I'd encourage everyone that is able to make a gift that is meaningful to you to the I Believe campaign. Again, those funds help support our district, our students, our teachers, who receive grants and different funds from that, from that campaign. And so any gift that you're able to give that is meaningful for you, I'm sure they will appreciate. So thank you, Ms. Watson.
Mr. President, I did leave out some people. I'm so sorry. And I can't walk out of here and forget them. So Amy DeSoto from Washington High School is from the Class of 1991.
Okay.
And those, these are our educator awards. I'll go ahead and announce them. Cynthia Garner, Wyandotte High School, Class of 1987. And Diane Washington, Wyandotte High School, Class of 1987. Thank you again.
Congratulations to all of the honorees for the Reasons to Believe. Great folks that we are recognizing. And hopefully, everyone is able to attend the different upcoming events that Ms. Watson shared with us today. Board, you have those on your calendar. But if you need additional information, make sure you reach out to either Ms. Smith or Ms. Watson, and we'll definitely get you that information. Again, congratulations to all those honorees and to everyone that has participated in that. Thank you. Okay, so we will come up to our next agenda item, which is an executive session, Agenda Item 5. Board, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes, to include Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell, Samara Devon, Mr. Steve Lilly, and Mr. Greg Gohean invited to be present, going in at 5:35 for five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, Ms. Devon is not here, so she won't be joining.
I love you.
Leslie, we'll just...
Moved in seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call.
I don't know.
Should be okay.
Connection still works.
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Okay, Wanda Page, yes.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Dr. Win.
Thank you.
All right, we now entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of parties involved under coma for five minutes going in at 5:46 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Steve Lilly, Mr. Greg Gohean.
Janie moves.
Rachel, second.
Been seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Page, yes.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we now entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of parties involved under coma for five minutes going in at 5:46 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Steve Lilly, Mr. Greg Gohean.
Janie moves.
Rachel, second.
Been seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownley Page, yes.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we now entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of parties involved under coma for five minutes going in at 5:46 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Steve Lilly, Mr. Greg Gohean.
Janie moves.
Rachel, second.
Been seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownley Page, yes.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we now entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect privacy interests of parties involved under coma for five minutes going in at 5:46 to include Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Steve Lilly, Mr. Greg Gohean.
Janie moves.
Rachel, second.
Been seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownley Page, yes.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. We will continue to item number six on the agenda. Board, I would ask to remove item B, as in boy, from the consent agenda.
So moved.
Well, I think I can just pull it, sorry. So we'll pull item B. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent?
Randy, I'd like to remove the HR report. I don't know what number it is.
Yes, that's the one I just removed, Dr. Win.
Okay.
Thank you. Is, are there any other items from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownley Page.
Wanda Brownley Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board, I would pay a motion to approve item B, the HR report and recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownley Page.
Wanda Brownley Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board, I would pay a motion to approve item B, the HR report and recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownley Page.
Wanda Brownley Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we will continue on with our agenda. Next up is our communications. We will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things to highlight and a few reminders. First, I want to say yesterday, Monday, October 9th, was Indigenous People's Day. We want to take the time to acknowledge, educate, and celebrate our Native American community as we commemorate their histories and cultures. And also, as we're wrapping up Hispanic Heritage Month, I do want to say we love seeing the art here. And we had several conversations about having student art in this space for every meeting. So I will work with Ms. Burns to see how we can make that happen. On Saturday, several of us, there's something flying around, participated in the annual Silver City Parade in Argentine. As always, the atmosphere was fun. It was really good seeing all of the participation from several of our elementary schools and all of our high school bands. On Friday, we had the opportunity to be at Bannaker to have a ribbon cutting for the mini pitch soccer that is there that was donated by the Casey Current Target and the U.S. Soccer Foundation and Musco Lighting. And the students had a wonderful time and interacting with the Casey Current players. And we were excited for the partnership. And Casey Current really wants to partner with us in the future. And we're excited about what that can do for our students. The Diploma Plus program held its fifth annual college fair day last Tuesday, October 3rd, at the Legends Field. More than 75 colleges, universities, and post-secondary partners were present to help our students. Several of our students learned about campuses that they may do not know exist. And then they also got information about scholarships. The college fair day gives students an opportunity to set up interviews, collect literature, and learn more about institutions, core values, and campus life. So thank you to the Diploma Plus team that put this together. Each year, it gets bigger and better. And several of the colleges look forward to it. I also want to thank all the participants who turned out to engage in our Community Vision Team meeting last Tuesday. Your input and questions were appreciated. And we look forward to your attendance and participation in future meetings. Additional information about the next meeting date will be forthcoming. And this month is also Mental Health Awareness Month. And yesterday, I got to participate in a documentary launch with Blue KC and the Kansas City Royals, really emphasizing the mental health, particularly, they were focused on the mental health of student athletes. And it's a great docu-series. And if we have a chance to show it here to our parents, it was really targeted to parents of athletes. There was a lot of great information there. So thank you. And I will turn it back over to Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. I'll be brief. Board, just a few reminders. October 19th, we do have our board retreat. So hopefully, that's on your calendar and you're able to be there. That will be in person at the Junior Achievement Offices. And you should have that on your calendar. If you need additional information, please contact Ms. Smith, and she can make sure to get you on your way there. That is October 19, 3 p.m. for our board retreat. Additionally, there is a finance committee coming up on October 17th for those that are part of the finance committee as well. Dr. Stubblefield mentioned several of the items I was able to attend as well. And I know several board members were. One thing I'll highlight is that I was able to participate in last week with Ms. Russell and a couple of folks from staff was a day of exploration with some folks from J.E. Dunn, where they took us out to different facilities that they have either renovated or built new, just to kind of show us inspiration of what's out there and potentially what's possible. I know we'll hear a little bit later from our facilities, master planning and assessment. But just, it was great to be on that tour and kind of see what possibilities exist. We have some amazing facilities. As we toured some of those, I thought about the facilities that we have here, some of those that are newer, and what our students are getting in those schools. But then we also have some that are aged, and we've heard about that. And, you know, just some things that our students are missing out on. And so it was just a great opportunity to hear from them and to see what's out there. So thank you, Ms. Russell, for helping to pull that together into Mr. Lilly and the team who participated. So with that, I will open the floor. Again, I'll just, before I end, I'm sorry, again, just want to shout out to all of our families, our diverse families and students. We are one of the most diverse school districts in the metro and I'd say in the country, from students and families, not only of Hispanic heritage, African-American, Asian, all different backgrounds, cultures, races, ethnicities. And it is a beautiful thing to be able to, Native American, and to be able to celebrate and lift up our students and their cultures, whether it's in a particular month or just every single day that we're walking down a school hallway, and you get to see the diversity in our classrooms, diversity in the hallways, and in our community. It's just a beautiful thing. And to be able to have access to language interpretation skills at a board meeting and in our schools for our students and families, there are lots of opportunities that we're providing. So again, just thank you to our staff who are doing this work, to our students and families for bringing the richness of who you are to our district and to our community. And thank you to our DEI department as well, who continues to lift up some of the work that we're doing in our district to celebrate the diversity and to make sure that we are inclusive in all of our work for all of our students. So with that, I'll open the floor for any other board members who would like to share. Ms. Russell.
Yeah, I just wanted to once again say thank you to all of our principals out there as we continue to celebrate Principal, National Principal Month. I know Randy mentioned it last board meeting, but also just wanted to shout that out again, as well as it is always a great day to see all of the Hispanic heritage celebrations and all of the fun things taking place across our district each and every day. I just wanted to take a moment to send kudos again to Bike Walk KC for being here today. Last week, I had the privilege of participating alongside Janie and attending the National Walk, Ride, and Roll. I didn't see anybody roll to school. Maybe that's the car. Maybe that's what that is. Okay, okay, that might make sense. But it was a really fun day, and it was cool to see on social media our police department interacting. I continue to be grateful and thankful for the officers within our department who are going above and beyond to build relationships. I also saw, I think yesterday, some cards that a school created. And I just really want to uplift-
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. We will continue to item number six on the agenda. Board, I would ask to remove item B, as in boy, from the consent agenda.
So moved.
Well, I think I can just pull it, sorry. So we'll pull item B. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent?
Randy, I'd like to remove the HR report. I don't know what number it is.
Yes, that's the one I just removed, Dr. Nguyen.
Okay.
Thank you. Is, are there any other items from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board, I would pay a motion to approve item B, the HR report and recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Hearing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Uh, Dr. Nguyen, no, because I believe that there is some discrepancies concerning an issue. I vote no.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We will continue on with our agenda. Next up is our communications. We will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things to highlight and a few reminders. First, I want to say yesterday, Monday, October 9th, was Indigenous People's Day. We want to take the time to acknowledge, educate, and celebrate our Native American community as we commensurate their histories and cultures. And also, as we're wrapping up Hispanic Heritage Month, I do want to say we love seeing the art here, and we had several conversations about having student art in this space for every meeting. So I will work with Ms. Burns to see how we can make that happen. On Saturday, several of us, there's something flying around, participated in the annual Silver City Parade in Argentine. As always, the atmosphere was fun. It was really good seeing all of the participation from several of our elementary schools and all of our high school bands. On Friday, we had the opportunity to be at Bannaker, to have a ribbon cutting for the mini pitch soccer that is there that was donated by the Casey Current Target and the U.S. Soccer Foundation and Musco Lighting. And the students had a wonderful time and interacting with the Casey Current players, and we were excited for the partnership. And Casey Current really wants to partner with us in the future, and we're excited about what that can do for our students. The Diploma Plus program held its fifth annual college fair day last Tuesday, October 3rd, at the Legends Field. More than 75 colleges, universities, and post-secondary partners were present to help our students. Several of our students learned about campuses that they may do not know exist, and then they also got information about scholarships. The College Fair Day gives students an opportunity to set up interviews, collect literature, and learn more about institutions, core values, and campus life. So thank you to the Diploma Plus team that put this together. Each year, it gets bigger and better, and several of the colleges look forward to it. I also want to thank all the participants who turned out to engage in our Community Vision Team meeting last Tuesday. Your input and questions were appreciated, and we look forward to your attendance and participation in future meetings. Additional information about the next meeting date will be forthcoming. And this month is also Mental Health Awareness Month, and yesterday I got to participate in a documentary launch with Blue KC and the Kansas City Royals, really emphasizing the mental health. Particularly, they were focused on the mental health of student athletes. And it's a great docu-series, and if we have a chance to show it here to our parents, it was really targeted to parents of athletes. There was a lot of great information there. So thank you, and I will turn it back over to Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. I'll be brief. Board, just a few reminders. October 19th, we do have our board retreat. So hopefully, that's on your calendar, and you're able to be there. That will be in person at the junior achievement offices, and you should have that on your calendar. If you need additional information, please contact Ms. Smith, and she can make sure to get you on your way there. That is October 19, 3:00 PM for our board retreat. Additionally, there is a finance committee coming up on October 17th, for those that are part of the finance committee as well. Dr. Stubblefield mentioned several of the items I was able to attend as well, and I know several board members were. One thing I'll highlight is that I was able to participate in last week with Ms. Russell and a couple of folks from staff, was a day of exploration with some folks from JE Dunn, where they took us out to different facilities that they have either renovated or built new, just to kind of show us inspiration of what's out there and potentially what's possible. I know we'll hear a little bit later from our facilities, master planning and assessment, but just it was great to be on that tour and kind of see what possibilities exist. We have some amazing facilities. As we toured some of those, I thought about the facilities that we have here, some of those that are newer, and what our students are getting in those schools. But then we also have some that are aged, and we've heard about that, and, you know, just some things that our students are missing out on. And so it was just a great opportunity to hear from them and to see what's out there. So thank you, Ms. Russell, for helping to pull that together, and to Mr. Lilly and the team who participated. So with that, I will open the floor. Again, I'll just, before I end, I'm sorry, again, just want to shout out to all of our families, our diverse families and students. We are one of the most diverse school districts in the metro, and I'd say in the country, from students and families, not only of Hispanic heritage, African-American, Asian, all different backgrounds, cultures, races, ethnicities. And it is a beautiful thing to be able to, Native American, and to be able to celebrate and lift up our students and their cultures, whether it's in a particular month or just every single day that we're walking down a school hallway, and you get to see the diversity in our classrooms, diversity in the hallways, and in our community. It's just a beautiful thing. And to be able to have access to language interpretation skills at a board meeting and in our schools for our students and families, there are lots of opportunities that we're providing. So again, just thank you to our staff who are doing this work, to our students and families for bringing the richness of who you are to our district and to our community. And thank you to our DEI department as well, who continues to lift up some of the work that we're doing in our district to celebrate the diversity and to make sure that we are inclusive in all of our work for all of our students. So with that, I'll open the floor for any other board members who would like to share. Ms. Russell.
Yeah. I just wanted to once again say thank you to all of our principals out there as we continue to celebrate Principal, National Principal Month. I know Randy mentioned it last board meeting, but also just wanted to shout that out again, as well as it is always a great day to see all of the Hispanic heritage celebrations and all of the fun things taking place across our district each and every day. I just wanted to take a moment to send kudos again to Bike Walk KC for being here today. Last week, I had the privilege of participating alongside Janie and attending the National Walk, Ride, and Roll. I didn't see anybody roll to school. Maybe that's the car. Maybe that's what that is. Okay, okay, that might make sense. But it was a really fun day, and it was cool to see on social media our police department interacting. I continue to be grateful and thankful for the officers within our department who are going above and beyond to build relationships. I also saw, I think yesterday, some cards that a school created, and I just really want to uplift the education, but also the connections that our police department is really making with our students. I think it's a remarkable thing. We talk a lot about how do we change that narrative around those relationships? And so whether it be walk to school, whether it be a presentation in the classroom, Safe Buddies, whatever it is, or even just helping a kid outside when they're leaving school, I'm just really grateful and thankful for the work that our officers are doing. So thank you, Chief Nicholson, and Officer Lyle left because he knew I was going to talk about him today. But just thank you all for all that you do. Thank you.
I had the opportunity to attend the NAACP, their banquet. I thought it was one of the better banquets. The speaker was phenomenal on the Kansas side. I normally go to the one in Missouri, so it was nice to get back on the Kansas side and to hear such a speaker. I went to Bannaker also for the pitch ball. I wish we could do that at every school. I know the kids would be excited about it. The UAW Local 31 had an election forum. I thought it was good, which would have been more candidates there, but I know sometimes you can't make everything. And then I also attended the wake for our HR personnel, Pamela McKnight, for her daughter. I think we need to continue to keep her in our prayers, or whatever you believe, just a positive thought. She needs that. I also went to the college fair, and I thought the Diploma Plus program did an excellent job. And the more we can do that, and the more we can expose our kids and give them the opportunities they deserve and need.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Additional board members?
Uh, Mr. Lopez, and board, I also attended the NAACP banquet, the Silver City Parade, and on the last two, Monday and Tuesdays, and yesterday, attended a special committee on education. Mr. Sean Miller will probably share some of the items that we all across the state will deal with, but items that USD 500 was particularly singled out as to either being in compliance or not. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nguyen. Board members? Okay. I'm sure you can catch your local board member somewhere out and about during the next couple of weeks. All right, we'll continue with our agenda next. On our agenda's item number eight, we, board, this is in front of you for informational purposes tonight. Some of your questions that you had sent ahead of time are in the board library if you need to reference those. If, again, just for informational purposes regarding potential website and logo branding, but if there are any particular questions right now, we can take those, or you can email those back in to Dr. Stubblefield, and we'll make sure that we get those responses back to you. And this will come before the board, potentially at a future board meeting for potential action if it is the will of the board. So are there any questions on this item at this time?
I think I just had a, if, and I don't need the answer today. I think a follow-up to the response. I'm not quite sure how this item does not have to follow the bid process. And so if we could get clarity on why and kind of stipulations, I think through the work that the finance committee has done, you all have been very clear on what has to go through the process. And I'm just not under, it's not making sense why this particular thing doesn't have to, so.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional questions this time? Okay. As questions may come up, please, again, email those to Dr. Stubblefield, and we'll make sure that we get a response to all board members on that particular question. So we'll continue with agenda item number nine. Board, these are, board, first, we have with us information on the Hollis and Miller Facilities Study Report. And so we've got a brief presentation to share with all of you.
Dr. Nguyen needs help.
Can we get someone to help get the presentation up? Oh, there it is. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
I apologize. I did not bring any music to accompany our presentation tonight, but maybe we'll work on that for next time. That was fun. Well, thank you for the time this evening. We wanted to give just a brief update tonight on where we're at in the facility master plan process. We've been busy behind the scenes working with the Facility Vision Team and had a great meeting with the, the first meeting with the Community Vision Team last week. So real quick, just going to give you a quick update on schedule. Touch base really quickly on the planning priorities that we were here last month to share with you. Talk a little bit about what we heard at that Community Vision Team last week, and then look a little bit ahead for the next months of what we're going to be working through with that Facility Vision Team over the course of the next two months. So as a quick reminder, we are working, what was presented to us initially was a goal of trying to get through this process by the end of the year. So we are, we are, we are rolling through step four, which is a reminder, is that explore options. So now that we've collected all of that data, we are pulling that all together to try and understand what we have to work with as we look forward and start to understand what that might look like over the next 10 to 15 years, to really try and break apart that plan into digestible and manageable pieces for the future. And then ultimately, right now, with where we're in the process, we're hopeful that we'd be able to bring a recommendation back in November, as well as possibly December, but that'll all kind of see where things shake out over the next month, but trying to keep that process moving and get back in front of you guys with good information each month. So with that, if you remember last time, Michelle was here to share with you guys a summary of the planning priorities that we've comprised with the Facility Vision Team, the Educational Vision Team, and with your guys' input through that last survey. So this is just a quick reminder, and this is a piece that we did share with the Community Vision Team last week to try to understand where the community is in terms of these priorities as well. So we'll share a little bit back there with them. But we also did, based on some of the comments and questions at the last board meeting, we did go back and dive a little bit deeper into that initial survey data that we did that was open to the full community. And as we pulled out some of that information that you'll see here in a second, we really felt like they were embedded into this and was hitting most of these same points that came from those initial strengths and some of those opportunities, especially with that data. So happy to talk about this a little bit more as we get to questions, but felt pretty good, as well as with conversations with the Facility Vision Team and then the Community Vision Team, that this was hitting a lot of those marks from that initial data there. So with that, I'll jump right into. So last week, we spent close to two hours with a group of about 30 from the community. I know several of you guys were there as well, so thank you for your time there and your input. And what we really wanted to do was get them up to speed. Obviously, we've shared several updates with you on a lot of data. So we gave them a pretty in-depth, but tried to be very efficient with them, about an hour of that background of all of the assessment reports and pieces that we've shared with you over the last few months. And then what we wanted to spend some of that time was, is again, trying to understand if there is that unique viewpoint and perspective from that group and what other information maybe we're missing, and if there's anything additive that we want to get to include in that data as we move forward. So one of the first questions we asked them is, if you guys remember several months back, we asked the stat, your staff, we asked you guys in the community, kind of what those top three strengths are, and also those opportunities for improvement. And what we wanted to do was hear from a smaller group, maybe that's a little bit more diverse from the community, different organizations, and then compare that against that original survey information to make sure we're still marching kind of down that right path. And what we heard from them, from a strengths perspective, kind of three to four really pulled to the top there that were over a 30% input rate there. And what we heard was that diverse student population that welcomes all learners. That's awesome. We heard that Diploma Plus is really resonating in the community and feel like that is a strength of the district. We heard teachers, administrator, and staff is a strength, and then access to technology for students and states were all up there, kind of on those top three to four that we heard from them. And then this was the exact same list that we shared with the larger community and the staff as well, so we can keep comparing that data side by side. And then when we asked about opportunities, what we heard was student assessment results, quality of facilities. Interestingly enough, teachers, administrators, and staff fell both almost comparably in a strength and an opportunity. And then safe and secure facilities did kind of rise to the top there as well on that opportunities piece. And then if you look over at the strengths piece, that was kind of further down there. So that one is balancing pretty well. The teachers, administrator, and staff, honestly, that's not that uncommon to think that those are both a strength and obviously can always have some improvement there. Quality of facilities, I think we heard that in all of the initial survey results. Student assessment result was a little bit different than we had heard in some of the larger survey data there. And so just as a reminder and a comparison, this is the summary from the larger community survey that was done at the beginning. So strengths, again, hearing teachers, administrator, staff, the diverse population. So if I would jump back a second, those two things were also strengths in the CVT. The one thing that was a little bit of a difference here is the larger community viewed safe and secure facilities as one of our strengths, whereas in the smaller group there, that was not something that resonated as much. And then on the flip side, the opportunities that came out from the larger one, again, there were some, you know, safe and secure was up there, kind of that fourth one down, but teachers, administrator, staff, and then that student-centered learning and mental health was what kind of pulled to the top there. So seeing some similarities there, nothing that is completely out of line with the larger dataset, but just additional perspective there to keep in mind. The second thing we asked was one of the open-ended questions from the survey as well. And what is, this was really a broad topic to understand, what does successfully supporting students over the next five years really look like? So what we heard from the community was kind of three different buckets of topics. And from the CVT, we actually, three very similar, and then a fourth one as well. So we've kind of tried to consolidate this feedback and these commentary into four. So we heard a lot about preparing students for their future, specifically fine arts and different STEAM opportunities rose to the top, quality, safe and secure facilities, not surprising there, and then also sense of belonging and community, and really what that feels and looks like for kids and for staff in the district. So as a reminder, when we asked the larger community at large and also staff, this was very similar. We heard very similar things, safety, security, high-quality teachers, and that real-world learning and future-focused technology. So in general, that's a really good thing. We're hearing the same thing from different groups of constituents in the community. So very positive there. And then I won't go through these. These were all in the data that we've shared previously here, some of those quotes. And then the final thing that we, final activity that we asked them along all the sharing was, we asked them to rank the planning priorities in order from most to least impactful. Obviously, as we talk through this, there's a lot of things that we want to prioritize for our kids and for facilities. But as we'll talk about a little bit here later tonight, typically, our needs outweigh our resources. So we've got to have that lens to try and prioritize as we work through things. So what we heard from them was safe and secure facilities and play spaces was at the top of that. If we were going to prioritize any of these things, which, again, not a huge surprise there, that's something I think that's important to all of us. Welcoming up-to-date environments to support student success was number two. So this is an interesting one, because if you guys remember, when we talked about the roadmap of planning priorities, we start with those foundational items, infrastructure, safe and secure facilities. So this is one I think we'll probably dig into a little bit more deeply in the next CVT, of whether or not welcoming up-to-date environments, what that really looks like. Because what we think it probably means from them, we didn't get a lot of time to unpack that, but is really that visual of when you first walk into the building, what do you see and feel? And while from a facility standpoint and from a district standpoint, high-quality buildings and systems, again, protect that investment, make sure, you know, obviously, we don't want to put new carpet in a space if the roof is leaking. So there's some of that that we balance, but this is really helpful and important to understand where they're coming from. They are looking for, as we walk into a building, what is that impact on kids and learners and staff, and what does that feel like? So I think that's interesting there. And then that same thing, that third one, that kind of resonated to the top, was supporting the whole child. Again, what is that welcoming environment, and how are we providing different opportunities and support for kids? And then as we go down that, again, there's not a huge range here, so they're still saying all of these are important. You know, there's none of these that it was like, mm, those aren't important. But as you see here, this is a good correlation to look at, just as, again, as we work through options for a master plan and what can be prioritized. This is another lens to help us, because that's not some, that's not data we got from the larger community survey or even the staff, since this is kind of an incremental process, and that, the priorities came from that original data. And then finally, the last piece we want to talk about a little bit right now is, over the course of the month, we've been meeting with the Facility Vision Team several times to start to understand the magnitude of what we've uncovered from all of the data. Obviously, there's a lot out there. There's a lot of facilities. So what our focus the last month has been, has been really on understanding the magnitude of what the needs are over the next 15 to 20 years. So what we have not done yet, and what one of the next steps will be, is really starting to understand and break that down into, over what type of time increments can this be done, and what are those available funding sources to support that. So right now, we are looking at the overall magnitude, and that's kind of the next piece, as we get to a little bit more manageable packages of needs to continue the process and kind of come to some different options to share back with you overall for five, 10, 15-year increments. So one of the first things we did with the group earlier this month was, we took those, again, those planning priorities. Those are impactful statements that we can use to use as a metric across the options as we pull back together with you guys over time. But what we did was, we dug a little bit deeper on what each of those eight things truly mean, and how do we prioritize within those buckets, again, knowing that the needs are always going to outweigh our resources. So some of the quick things we heard from safety and security, open concept schools, we want to prioritize, or other facilities with similar needs for renovation, perimeter fencing at the elementary school playgrounds is a priority, eliminating mobile classrooms is a priority. Under high-quality infrastructure, updating consistent technology in teaching and learning spaces, and then looking at considering replacement or consolidations of buildings when the current condition outweighs the investment to improve those facilities. Again, not a must-do, but this is something we need to consider in order to protect the quality and infrastructure of the facilities. From a right-sized building standpoint, that desired max capacity by learning level, want to make sure that we're hitting that as we look at overall capacity at each learning level and throughout the district. Again, eliminating mobile classrooms, and then open to exploring redistricting if and when it makes sense to balance capacities versus investing in new construction. The fourth one there, athletic experience. From an elementary standpoint, the thing that really rose to the top was combination cafeteria gymnasiums or a programming challenge at those schools, and having additional space for dedicated cafeterias and gyms would be ideal long-term. At the high schools, just trying to figure out what parity looks like within the district and with surrounding districts. Potentially, some high-level needs would be a second gym at the high schools, additional practice and competition exterior facilities, wrestling weight rooms, looking at those sizes and those conditions. And then at the middle school, looking at parity within the district at each building, again, for practice and competition facilities, specifically outside. And then looking at equitable support of learners, again, balancing, balancing needs and resources, both at all learning levels and also within the cluster feeder diagrams throughout the district, looking at some sped program baselines within each cluster, and then that accessibility improvements, obviously, with the age of some of these buildings, to provide that equitable support. Supporting the whole child, again, that's all about providing flexibility and space to provide additional space for supporting kids in different, unique ways as it's needed. And then that welcoming environment, student-centered learning, again, focusing on high visual impact, that maybe, that is a lower impact on resources, and then potentially looking at some furniture options to provide some of those flexible options without doing major renovations at spaces. And then the opportunity for instructional evolution is all about, if we are renovating or if we are building new spaces, adding a classroom addition, for example, using those spaces to explore where we're going in the future and how we want to best support kids and learners and facilitators in those spaces. Okay, so to get to the meat of it, so obviously, as we shared with you guys before the reports on each facility, we identified immediate needs that showed up as red, and then future needs that showed up as yellow. So what we've gone through is, we've, we've spent a lot of time over the last month going through and pricing and looking at budgets for these needs, and it is a big number. So what we're showing up here is a summary of, again, red would be a kind of a five-year outlook, the yellow would be a 10-year outlook. So over the next 10 years, to date, we've identified about $240 million worth of infrastructure or deferred maintenance needs, again, mechanical replacements, roof, carpet, all of those type of things that you saw outlined in your report. So this includes all of those that are included in that for all of the facilities, both educational and support facilities as well. and support facilities as well. The second piece that we took from that is, if you guys remember, we went through all the department meetings, we met with principals. So kind of the less tangible, looking at facilities, what are those space needs? What are potential investments that maybe, you know, we've got high capacity in a building, things that we need to look at for potential future projects. So what we did, and again, this is a large number here, we identified about another $600 million worth of either new construction additions or large renovation projects at facilities to round out that needs assessment across the district. So just a couple highlights here, because that's obviously a very big number. That include, that number includes the consolidation of five, so sorry, 10 elementary schools into five element, five combined elementary schools, similar to the approach that happened about seven years ago with a couple of the elementary schools. Classroom additions at a couple of elementary schools, Woody and Emmy Pearson, to eliminate mobiles at those. Potential gym additions to remedy the cafeteria, caffeum, consolidation there, playground upgrades, special education upgrades, and then furniture and tech upgrades. At the middle school level, again, this is 10-plus-year plan, looking at potential for replacement of central Argentine. Those would be the two kind of more immediate ones, based on the scoring and needs assessment, and then Eisenhower and Arrowhead in the future, that may be 10-plus years. And then additional athletic spaces, as we talked about, auditorium, special ed, and furniture upgrades. At the high school, possible classroom additions to Wyandotte to address the capacity overage there, and then additional athletic spaces, second gyms for those that don't have them, and additional updated outdoor facilities. Same thing, auditorium, special ed, and furniture, we're going to see consistent. And then there are some other ones that are more district-wide amenities, looking at the potential for either a rebuild or realignment of Morse ECC over time, and then looking at a further exploration of potential district athletic complex, a consolidated facilities for middle or high school, potential district aquatic center, and then we are including in this number a potential for a main library replacement. So those are some large numbers. And unfortunately, as we always know, needs tend to outweigh the resources we have. So we've got to, we've got to look forward and start to kind of break that apart and plan for the future. So one thing to be aware of, kind of going back in history, so in the 2015, 2016 assessments and need evaluation, there are about $800 million worth of needs identified at that point. We know the district has invested a lot of money, probably $250 to $300 million at least in facilities since that time. So that gets us down to, let's say, $550, $500 million. Unfortunately, in the last seven years, we've also seen unprecedented inflation and escalation of materials and labor. So if we were to take that $550 million of needs that were assessed back then and escalate that just to today's dollar, that translates into about $700 million of needs that were previously identified, and then we've probably added in there about $175 million more, again, just the wear and tear and aging of facilities, especially with so many buildings in the 50- to 100-year age range. And then that is also in today's dollars. So just want to understand that. If we look at a 10-, 15-year plan, that is $875 million in today's dollars. So as we start to look out five, 10 years, there's an additional inflation factor that we'll have to consider as we get deeper into this plan. For a little bit of frame of reference to break that down a little bit more, so just to kind of understand that escalation that we're seeing, a new elementary school was budgeted approximately $18 million in 2016. We're looking at close to $30 million in today's dollars. Middle school, $42, looking at about $60 million now, and then $235 million invested in 2016, we'd be looking at about $325 million to have a similar impact today, just for some points of reference. Okay, so what we've shared with the FET over the last two meetings was, you're going to see numbers here, this is about $500 million of that $800 million. So what we did is, we started to, again, trying to break this down into more digestible approach. So we took some of those new or consolidated schools, and we took almost all of the other projects there, and we started to put those into bundles to start to talk about what that looks like. Do these rise to the top as priorities? So this is kind of a work in progress here, but we've taken those pieces that we just talked about and started to bundle those, and this is one of the pieces that we'll share more on next time we're back with you guys. But really quickly, I'll run through what those bundles are, just for a reference, a little bit more detail. So that first bundle is looking at replacing four buildings with a consolidation of two elementary schools, and then replacing Argentine. So that, again, those numbers we just looked at would be looking at about $130 million to build two new elementary schools and one new middle school, just again, for frame of reference. Second bundle here would be one middle, one middle school, one elementary school replacement would be about $95 million. Classroom additions, again, prioritizing getting rid of mobile classrooms and adding additional capacity through additions there, would be looking at three buildings, just under $9 million there. Additional classroom additions, we are carrying some other ones out there because we are talking about potential for replacement or consolidation. So if that would not happen, we may want to look at additions at those, again, to deal with some of those over-capacity issues we're seeing today. Fourth one, this was probably a little bit lower on the priorities in terms of replacement schools, but one ECC there, again, looking at all parity from all levels there. Bundle five was looking at the elementary schools that currently have a cafeteria, gymnasium combination and have space available onsite to potentially add a gym. Some of the, some of the sites do not allow that, and then some of them would be looking at replacement, so those would not be included here right now. Middle school and high school athletics and improvements, looking at both interior gym additions for Schlegel-Harman, renovations at the high school gyms, middle school gyms, and then practice fields for middle school and high school here. One thing, discussing whether or not it would make sense to invest in a district athletic complex versus individual improvements at each high school. We've had a lot of conversation on this one, on where the best value and/or investment would be there. Bundle seven here, and again, you'll see on a few of these updated, we started with some, and we've made, we've made some adjustments here, looking at renovations to both high school and middle school auditoriums to bring up, bring those facilities, lighting, rigging, that sort of thing. Bundle eight is furniture and technology upgrades. This is going in and having an impact at basically every school and every level, not necessarily replacing all the furniture and technology, but having some impact at each building. Accessibility upgrades, these were kind of taking some of the priority accessibility upgrades throughout the district. If there's any facilities that don't currently have elevators or accessible paths to some of the major locations there, were prioritized in this bundle. And then district-wide sped upgrades, again, this was looking at one middle school, one high school in each feeder, and then a couple of elementary schools and feeders to do some additional resource support in those facilities. Bundle level, this eleven was about floor, ceiling, and paint, kind of that high-impact, lower-cost improvements there. And then bundle 12 and 13, the deferred maintenance was really looking at all those things that we just looked at that were in red, those immediate needs, roofs, HVAC, lighting, carpet, plumbing, a lot of plumbing, doors, windows, that sort of thing, playgrounds and fencing. Bundle 14 was looking at, I know there's been some conversations related to, we did identify a few small, immediate needs at South Library, West and Schlegel, and then there is a cost in here, just for a frame of reference, for replacing a main library, so 80,000 square feet is the current size of the current main library, and then looking at potentially an increase in square footage, so that's where those budget numbers are coming from there. And then looking at potential for a district aquatic center to address some of the swimming pool challenges at the high schools currently. Again, there is a range here, there is facilities that would support kind of high school competition or a larger community-centered aquatic center. So those are both, those are both of the ranges that are showing here, kind of an eight-lane pool, and then more of a community-centered pool facility. And then finally, the final one is some high school pool improvements at each of those facilities. All right, so lots of numbers, lots of information. So where are we going from here? So actually, starting tomorrow, we're going to be meeting with the FET again, and then here in a couple more weeks. And what we are going to be doing is taking these bundles and starting to look at some options that package these together and start to apply those planning priorities, as well as looking at what that impact might be on the feeder diagrams, if we are making some shuffles there. So those are going to be the big two things we focus on, is how do we package these together to understand, how much do we want to invest over how long? So what does it look like for a three, five, 10, 15-year investment? What are potential funding sources? And what's that threshold, both from a staff resource internally and of what we can do from a funding that we have or funding that we may need to go out and procure, and what is that impact to the community around us? So that's going to be the big key that we'll come back to you with next month, is starting to, again, pare that down and present some options to you. You will start to see this, I know we shared this before, and you've seen this before. One of the other things we're really looking at right now, we know there's been some challenges with transportation in some of the feeder clusters. So we are looking at, we know that capacity is a challenge at some facilities, but throughout the district, we do have some capacity there. So we are starting to look at, how can we make some, potentially make some adjustments to do that within our current structure? So those are some of the things that will be coming back, we've been looking at a lot of options there, again, to understand where do we want to invest if we need, if we can make some of those adjustments, maybe we don't need to invest in some other facilities or we can reallocate some investments in other locations. So with that, I'm going to jump past that one. This is just going to see what you're going to start to see there. So if we are consolidating, adding on to facilities, you're going to start to see all those things kind of start to appear on this diagram. Oops. Okay, so that is our quick update for tonight. As I mentioned, we will be, we've got several more meetings. We're going to give the principals an update on where we're at in the process in the morning. We've got a Facility Vision team tomorrow, and then right now, tentatively, we'll be looking to come back to, to share another update at the November board meeting.
Great. Thank you very much for the information, the presentation. Definitely a lot in there to continue to digest, but really critical information as we continue to plan for the future of the district and the community, and looking at our infrastructure and how critical it is to continue to invest in ways to make sure our students have, our students and staff have what they need. I will open the floor for the board if there are any questions and or comments after tonight's presentation.
I asked the last time, and you guys said you were going to check into it. With the new law coming in for 24, 25, the impact of students being able to go where they want to go to school, how it relates to all of this. I didn't know if you were able to collect some data, or is that something you're going to do?
We are working on trying to gain some data to inform, inform what that impact might be. We unfortunately do not have that yet, and I think, I believe that...
So tonight's agenda, the open enrollment policies are there. One of the things that will be difficult to do is to predict if our students will even, you know, get in the lottery for other districts, and if they will actually, other districts will have the capacity. The information that we do have, and we also will continue to engage with RSP, is just our general enrollment trends, and what is factored in is the information that we had from a previous RSP report, is that over the course of the next several years, in certain areas, our enrollment will decline. So they have that information, and in other areas. So that's been factored in, but that's a moving target that we won't know until after this first round. And when districts, in January, we have to identify what our, January, right, our capacities? No, June, June 1.
Yeah, May.
Yeah. So we won't know what other districts' capacities are, and then the lottery system after that. So after this first year, we would have a better idea.
I respect that, I understand that. But I know in the state of Iowa, they did it, and the young lady had mentioned that, and that's why I asked that. You saw the data from them. I know we're talking about two different districts, Iowa's different, but it kind of gives you an idea. It doesn't mean it's going to be the exact same. I was just wondering, based on their data, what they had, how, what does that say for us? Just wondering.
Absolutely. And we're trying to see if we can gain any data from there or from anywhere else in the country that may have had any impact. Don't have that yet, but keep, obviously, keep that in mind, and we'll continue to explore to see if there's anything that can inform our planning. As Dr. Stubblefield mentioned, right now, over the next five years, the projections are showing about an 800-student decline. So we do know that right now, enrollment is not projected to increase, so that is one thing that we are accounting for in there. And then obviously, that'd be another layer, you know, and our recommendation at that point would be to make sure that every year, especially with open enrollment being a new variable, to go back and update the, the facility assessment from a capacity standpoint to make sure as you're, you know, again, wouldn't necessarily be taking on a lot of scope of the master plan in the first year, so should be able to make some adjustments down the road if we do see a large impact with open enrollment. Definitely something we're keeping in mind and trying to be mindful to incorporate what we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
So I asked for this the last time you were here, is the information regarding the library scans. I have not actually seen that draft document that you spoke of tonight again. The other piece is more of an internal question of, can we make that document while it's still in a draft format available? Because that was a piece, I think you tried to put up on the screen during the CVT meeting, but for whatever reasons, it was hard to, for folks to see where all of the buildings are. I think that's an important part of this process. You talk about we have buildings 50 to 100. So it is, to me, as if I wasn't in this seat, it would be important to understand why we're having these conversations, because I think at the top of it is equity, and equity in learning spaces is important, but I think we also need to share that information out, however. And I know you've been very open with us about this process, but I think as we get to more of the options, collection piece of it, how can we share with the community what we've been doing, what we've partaken? You know, we talk about the surveys, we talk about 30 people being at the group, so like, we need to be sharing the information as it goes, because as much as it's overwhelming to some of us in this moment, to then say, this is the option we got to, but we haven't shared publicly any information, I wonder if that's something you and Edwin and the team can work on, is how we can create a communication strategy or share, have a place on the website where this information is housed, so.
And just to clarify, you're specifically asking about the library assessment reports?
Yes. So I guess it was supposed to get added to the other reports that you gave to us, on top of this process. If I'm not in this board meeting, or I don't go back and watch this, where can I find the information about this process?
Okay. Let us confirm, and we'll make sure that can become available to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, I have three questions, and I think I have three questions. First, are the projects identified in our capital outlay, are they included within your assessment, your, your, your document?
Are you talking about the capital?
Outlay projects, are they included in this document?
I believe there are some overlaps to some of the current capital outlay projects, such as some roof replacements that are planned for next summer already, some HVAC replacements that Doug and his team are working through, and Steve already this year. We tried to take the approach this past spring when we were assessing facilities to document all of the needs, whether or not the district maybe had a plan to, to take care of them already, just to make sure they didn't get lost and that we had everything documented for a cohesive look at the identified needs. So we did meet with Steve, Doug, and the facilities team a couple weeks ago, and we did go through the full deferred maintenance list, that about $80 million of immediate needs, and we did take a few things off that list that were completed this past summer. And then what we did was, we looked towards next summer, and then even, I think, the next one to two years of projects that had planned. And if they were already bid and the district had already committed dollars to them, we took them off the list. But if they were something that was still in a planning phase for capital outlay, we went ahead and left them in there just to make sure if something changed, that they didn't get kind of lost in the shuffle. So I do think there are some that are probably overlapping with current plans from a capital outlay standpoint. outlay standpoint because we haven't applied that funding source to the needs assessment yet.
Okay, so Mr. Lopez and board will have to make that adjustment. Second question, we have, within recent times renovated the swimming pools. Has this been taken into consideration? Are these duplicate renovations?
My understanding is there's been some HVAC, some rooftop unit replacements at the pools, but I'm not aware of any interior upgrades to them. Some of the things we have budgeted right now are like new starting blocks, timing clocks, some, some finish upgrades in those spaces. I don't believe we're duplicated, but we can definitely verify that to make sure we don't have anything that has already been resolved.
Okay, thank you. So we'll need to find that out as well.
Edwin, I just want to make sure, are you, are you also, because I am following you, are you also talking about when we emptied the pools and we supposedly did some work to see if they were?
Fixed the leak?
Yes. Is that what you're talking about?
No. There was, I think, more extensive renovation than just fixing the leak and abating mold.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So we'll, we'll need more information on that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
We can definitely get more. I do know one of them, there are some, some structural, some steel that's, needs to be addressed in one of the schools there as well. So we'll confirm that though and get that information to you in more detail.
Okay. And I guess this is just a generic statement and question to the board. I see you have a December, at the end of your report, there is a December, well, your timeline states acceptance of your recommendations. Am I correct?
It notes a tentative approval in December if we get a recommendation in November. So that is kind of just where we are tracking right now. Initially, we were asked to try and get through the process by the end of 2023. So that's where we're sitting right now. Obviously, that would be up to your discretion in terms of what recommendation was brought to you in November and December and where the board felt comfortable moving forward. So that is just tentative timeline right now for a potential recommendation and approval if things continue to move. But obviously, that would be at your discretion of when you were comfortable adopting or approving a plan there.
Well, see, that's, board, that's my, my ultimate question. Accepting your report. Final payment or whatever, but I do not believe that, in my opinion, ties us to accepting your future timeline. I believe it is then our responsibility to close the loop on your work, submit final payment, accept that you have documented and cross-referenced these, these projects, and then we move forward as a board in reevaluating. Board, that is my interpretation of accepting the report. Thank you.
I apologize, Dr. Win, you cut out a little bit.
Okay. Where did you not hear it?
The very beginning, just the very beginning part of...
The very beginning?
This first part after your interpretation of accepting the report.
You froze.
Okay. Accepting report means to accept the report, accept the recommendations. They have, they have dotted their i's, crossed their t's, they get their final payment and that is then the complete job of Hollison Miller. At that point, I believe, is then the board's responsibility to move and study and recommend. It is not my opinion that the December timeline, we accept whether it's Plan A, Plan B, or four or five. Did you understand that?
Yes, I understood that.
Thank you.
I do think I disagree a little bit because I would hate for what needs to happen in our facilities to be stagnant. So I think when...
No, no, no. I am not saying stagnant. I'm saying we then have the responsibility to take maybe this, this school over four or five that Hollison Miller recommended because we know of our resources and we know of the, whether the, the, the cost is prohibitive or not. No, I'm not, see, this is my challenge. Anytime I suggest the board has a responsibility, a response, I did not say you, a response is, well, you're just slow walking and road blocking and this, that and whatever. No. We have a responsibility. Now, if you, I have been with the visiting, visioning team, all of us haven't, but, but that's a debate, like you said before, that's an internal debate that we need to have. But yes, four or five of you can disagree. That's why we're in the United States of America.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? I mean, I do think this has been really helpful and this assessment continues to be really helpful so that we as a board can have, can be fully informed. And I appreciate the facilities committee and the visioning teams, everyone that's been a part of it, again, so that we can continue to be informed in how we make decisions and what's best for this district, this community, moving forward, what that looks like, absolutely. To your point, absolutely, it is the will of the board to make those final decisions whenever the board comes to, to, to that place. But I think this is an essential part of the work so we have an understanding of what's, what's there, what's available, where our biggest needs are and priorities. And including the community has been super helpful in that as well. So, but at the end of the day, absolutely, the board ultimately makes these decisions in how and when we move forward and what that looks like.
And Mr. Lopez, I agree with Dr. Win. I think after they complete the report, then we do need to sit down and come together and realistically look at what we can and cannot do. Because I, apparently, there's a money tree somewhere I don't know about that we need to run and grab the money, but we're going to have to look at it and be realistic about what we do have, what's available, and to make the adjustments and do as much as we can and plan it out from this time to this time, this is what we're going to do. From this time to this time, this is what we're going to do. We have the data, let's make it work, but it's not going to be a one-day meeting. And we need to sit down and be serious and not have a meeting where you got 15 or 20 things on the agenda. This is serious. If we're really concerned about doing this, then we need to sit down and talk about it and be realistic about it.
I think we are jumping ahead in the process. I think we are still in the, what, that's part of having the community vision team is for the community to tell us what it is that they're comfortable with. And I think we have talked about many different things. The numbers tonight are just an idea of all of our needs and that I believe part of the next steps for the community vision team as well as some of the internal teams is is that we're going to be able to draw down some of those pieces. We're going to have to have tough conversations because we're not going to be able to do everything. But then, as she mentioned, the idea is to also, based on capital outlay dollars, based on a potential bond, what is the cost to the community and what is the community willing to, to do? And that while we will be the seven people that ultimately decide if that's a question we ask the community, the community is going to have the opportunity to decide if that is a burden that they want to take on or not. And that is how those things work. And so I think, yes, you are ultimately right. We're going to have November and December to continue to have these conversations. I encourage people to dive into it. Don't wait until December to send your questions or ask. Megan and Steve are all available. That's what I'm asking of us. To move this work along, we can't wait till December to look at the information that they're providing us. And then respectfully, yes, there is no money tree, but our kids deserve better and I'm going to sit up here and argue that we are going to give them better regardless of what it costs because that is the future that we are taking care of.
I hear what you're saying and I would disagree with you. They deserve it, but we have to be realistic about what we have. And, and, and you've got to be realistic about our tax base. That's all I'm saying. Let's do what we can, do all that we can, but you can't create money that you don't have and it's a burden we keep...
100% agree.
Well, we'll see.
Thank you. And Ms. Russell, I think, I really appreciated your point about just how do we continue to communicate these, this and make sure this information is available in ways that our broader community can also access so that they can be informed and see what's happening in real time. So I really appreciate that suggestion to make sure that all folks are informed, not just those that are on the community visioning team, but that the entire community has that opportunity to view that. So thank you for that.
Mr. Ross, Mr. Lopez, that was the point. And if you remember, I also put, put it in the questions that the board, when will the board sit down and take a deep dive? So I'm not, you know, somehow my comments seem to turn left and, you know, we're, we're all on the same page. And again, that comment always, our students deserve the best. They also deserve the best education they can get within these buildings. So no one is asking anyone to just stop and drop any balls. So if you remember, I asked the questions, perhaps they weren't included. I'm not sure. There was some question as to what I meant, but remember, I asked when the board would also look, take time to look. So no one is trying to slow walk anything and no one's trying to, to roadblock and destroy anything. And Hollison Miller, you've done a great job, there's just some things you have to reconcile. And that's why we're having this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And at our board retreat, we can also look at that timeline and potentially look at dates for, to set a special meeting to have, just this as a conversation. But, so we'll, we'll continue this conversation again. Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments or questions tonight? Thank you so much for the information. We will continue with our meeting. Next on our agenda is item 9B. On board, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept the bid for Midwest Transit meeting the written requirements of the Kansas Bus Purchasing Program Bid Document from Midwest Transit, the amount of 780, let's cut off there.
782,000.
782,460, thank you, as submitted by Mr. Miguel Martin, Director of Transportation, Mr. Wayne Correll, Mr. Steve Lilly, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Some of, second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Page.
I apologize. Now, how many more new buses do we need after this, after we do this? Because I know we need, I was just wondering.
I'll let Mr. Martin come forward, but I will say, he can tell you the life of buses, but as long as we have buses, we will be replacing buses as their age. But he probably can give you a better idea of how many every few years. Yeah.
And I, while he's still coming up, sorry. Going back to the previous conversation around the capital outlay five-year plan, can we also add that to the website? Because I think it touches on these sorts of things. I think there was a rotation of buses, a rotation of different needs that we were going to address, just so that's out there for folks to see, like, we are working, but it does take work, so.
Yep, we can do that.
Good evening, everyone. So to answer your question, if we did have a process in place, realistically, would like to order 10 buses every year to refresh our fleet. But of course, we know we have other opportunities and things in the district that we have to allocate those dollars towards. Just this past year, we had six buses that we had to go through and out service that will actually be going on sale this week. And then next year, we're projecting five buses, just going off of the 25-year age requirement of KSDE. But then also too, we have situations of buses that come up that just the cost of the repair to maintain them is greater than the value of the vehicle itself.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Martin, whatever happened to that grant application that, if I remember it, it sounded like it was a done deal for electric buses?
Yes. So that, that first round opportunity that was presented, unfortunately, Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools was not selected in that lottery process. It was six districts out in Western Kansas that were selected in that process. It was a second round that started over the summer after gathering more information and researching more about electrical buses. Right now, we're still wanting to gather more information before we continue to pursue that opportunity to make sure that we're able to, one, maintain those vehicles, the cost of what is actually is going to impact our district both in the short term and in the long term for the life of those vehicles.
So would you say, in view of what you just said and your realization, we are happy that we did not get chosen?
No, I would say, no, we're not happy that we did not get chosen because we wanted to and we're disappointed we did not get chosen. But this has given us opportunity to gather and learn more information by soliciting and talking to some of the other districts that were awarded that opportunity. So we've been in contact with districts in Colorado that have 20-plus buses. St. Louis School District just submitted for the grant opportunity and waiting to hear if they're going to be selected. So this is giving us an opportunity to learn more, so we're putting ourselves in the best position.
Okay, so I should have put it like that. So we're in a better position now with more knowledge than we were if we would have been chosen? Is that a better, are you, is that more acceptable to your knowledge of the situation?
Oh, yes, indeed. So like, I'll give one example, just not to prolong anything, but just one example is one of the things that we were looking at in the first round was a charging station where four buses can charge off of one charging station. Well, one of the things that we learned from talking to other districts is that you actually need to do a one-to-one because if one charging station goes down, that's four buses that you're unable to charge. So that's where this informational period and learning from other districts has been beneficial for us. So we're presenting to you when we're ready to pursue that opportunity, what's best for the district.
So would you agree, as the kids will say, knowledge is power?
Oh, yes, indeed. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
While knowledge is power, are these hybrid buses or these are completely?
100% electric.
Okay.
So we actually currently do have four hybrid buses currently.
Okay.
Ms. Clark.
One of the things I heard you say is, is we ideally would replace 10 buses a year if there were a process. And I just want us to make sure that we as a board hear that because I don't know for sure, like, what you're spending to repair versus what we could be spending to replace, like, when you do that cost analysis. And so I just think we probably need to hear that and think about it as we're going back through budget season. So I just wanted to make sure that I did call that out for our board. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more, do you know if Kansas City, Missouri has electrical buses? Do they have it?
So no one in Kansas and the Missouri side has applied for it, has been awarded. St. Louis is the closest district on the Missouri side that's applying.
And I think Kansas City, Missouri contracts out their bus service.
They do, as well.
So they, it would, it would be whatever company they're contracting with.
Correct.
They qualify for it, but they don't run their own buses.
Additional questions? Not, there's a motion and second. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Win.
Dr. Win, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next agenda item, board, agenda item 9C. It's recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the request of the Rosedale Alumni Association replacement of nameplates at Rosedale Middle School in recognition of Rosedale alumni as submitted by Mr. Doug Clements, Mr. Steve Lilly, and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
I have a couple of questions that I forgot to send in and I apologize. Do you want them before or after the motion?
Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Humphries?
Okay. Do we... Do we know the maximum number of plates that can be affixed to the building? And do we know the size of each individual nameplate? And does the district have veto power over any names placed on the building? Do we have control over that?
He's got the samples, I didn't know.
Okay. I'm sorry I didn't get those into you guys yesterday.
Good evening, everybody. While Steve is showing you the samples of those, I'll just answer it. Honestly, I did not count. There's a lot of bricks. We're talking about doing them on the bricks right outside the door, so potentially hundreds. It depends on how many they sell. And the other question, just that you had the sample, was?
The maximum number.
You asked about veto power. I think we would probably, you know, honestly, that's not something I'll... Steve?
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
So last week, the naming committee met and we talked not about this, but we talked about similar situations, roads to... So I have a little bit of concern because I'm not hearing that we currently have this set up in any other process, something that was brought up out of that meeting, but also consistency. Should we be creating a process for these things instead of saying yes? Because what happens is now, once we say yes to this, and it's not because I'm not supportive, but I want to make sure that then if someone from Wyandotte says they want to do the same thing, do we have a process that can be followed through? And so I'm not against Rosedale Alumni Association doing it, but I do have concerns that if we open a gate, what that will then mean, because everyone wants to show their pride respectfully, but I also don't know that we have this opportunity and access for everyone. So then, how does it translate? And so just a question I thought I would pose, both from that meeting, but also, how do we do this and how do we ensure that we're consistent and not saying, yeah, we said yes to them? So I won't belabor the point, but...
That's a great point, Ms. Russell, and I'll allow for others to, and Mr. Lilly as well, if you had some responses. You know, I think that's a great point. One thing that gets brought up often by the board is just consistency from building to building and across the district, and just making sure that we have a process in place that everyone can follow to what you're saying. And so I think that makes a lot of sense, and I wonder if we would want to give staff and maybe that committee some time to, and staff to really think about the process of what that would look like from building to building. And if more time, again, not saying that we're not supportive of this, but just more time would give our staff that time to really think about what this process looks like, do it consistently across the district.
Just a question, so staff will have time. Greg, if this is tabled, can they say November 14th or does it automatically come up on the 24th?
Technically, I will. But you can do a couple of things. One, you could just not vote on it. I know you've got a motion and a second, but you could withdraw the motion and then put it on the agenda whenever you want. That'd probably make the most sense. You could table it to a date certain if you wanted to, but ordinarily, if you table it, it comes up at the next regular meeting is when it comes up.
I hear what Rachel said, and we do need a protocol. I think it's a good fundraiser for the school and it helps to build school pride and school morale. And I guess I'm a little puzzled. I don't, why would we not want someone to be on there? What do they have to do that you don't want them on there? That's what I'm asking.
That's a question I have. Do we have a protocol saying that we have control over names that go on our building? You don't know what... You need to have a process so that everything, everyone is treated the same. If there's a limited number of spaces, is it first come, first served? Or do they add to it? From building to building, is it the same quality of nameplate from each building to the other building? And it's not a fundraiser for the school. The Alumni Association is doing this.
Well, they may be doing it to raise funds, but... No, I'm on an alumni board. That's what we do. We want to use that money to help the school.
And that's fine, but like Rachel said, do we have a process to make it consistent from building to building in the district? And that's, to me, that is very important that we, that every Alumni Association have the same opportunities.
So there is a motion and a second on the floor. There's an idea of potentially withdrawing the motions if the board is not fully prepared to make a vote on this recommendation tonight in order to give staff more time to gather information and potentially build out a process. If the board would like to continue those that made the motion, it's totally up to you whether you want to move forward with that or not.
Move forward. Well, you need the consistency. I don't have a problem with that. I say table it, bring it back, work out the details, if you wanted to be fair across the board. But I just have an issue of us voting not to have certain people on it. Just set up the protocol and it applies to everybody.
How about, I would ask if those that made the motion to, if you would be agreeable to withdraw and then, again, bring back, bring this back at a future board meeting with additional information on the process.
And it also missed, a recommendation is for the naming committee to at least discuss it so that when it comes back to the board, at least they can have some recommendations and protocol that can be applied to other situations.
I believe the naming committee is looking at other instances of how to recognize alumni and/or staff, so it could fall in line with some of the conversations you're currently having.
Mr. Lopez, if the people who made the motion do not want to withdraw it, you can make a substitute motion and it overrides that. Did you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Nguyen. So who made the motion initially? Ms. Drew made the motion and seconded by Ms. Clark?
Ms. Clark and then Ms. Drew.
Oh, Ms. Clark made the motion.
I'm sorry, and I'm okay with withdrawing the motion, but oh, but Ms. Drew is not. Okay, so it sounds like...
Well, I will make a subsequent motion. Substitute, subsequent?
Substitute.
Thank you.
To bring it back at a future board meeting after...
To bring, sorry.
Greg, why don't you help her?
Because I'm not sure what she wants to do.
Yeah, I had to put it...
Are you wanting to move it?
Ask her off mic.
Say a future one.
Well, I think, well, I think what she was contemplating, which may be different than what other people are contemplating, was directing it to go to the naming committee first, which I was going to say, if it is going to go to the naming committee by your policy, the board does have to direct it to the naming committee. So was that what you were thinking? Because I thought that's...
So I'm going to make a substitute motion to bring this item back up at a future board meeting.
Second, I have a question because based upon what Greg is saying, bring it back to another board meeting or take it to the naming committee? Where is it going?
She's now moved to bring it back at a future board meeting, which would just put it back on the schedule.
Yes.
If, so I, that motion, that substitute motion now in front of you.
Okay.
You got a motion and a second. Probably resolve this, and then if you really want, if the board wants it to go to the naming committee, the way your policy reads on the naming committee, the board does have to direct it to the naming committee.
So my rationale was between now and that time, the naming committee is working on policy around, so then we could potentially bring the policy forth from the naming committee, and then at that time, we could use that input with regards to this because by table or staying for a later board meeting, it doesn't say which one, but it also gives the, it doesn't add more work to the naming committee, but should the board feel passionate in some way around having language added to that policy at that time, we could do that as well.
I'm all for a good process, so I give 100% support. Okay.
If I remember that, that's a whole nother story, but...
There is a substitute motion to table this and bring this at a future board meeting. Any other questions?
It's not tabled.
I'm sorry, not tabled, to bring this or to add a future board meeting. Thank you.
I have a question, please.
Yes.
Bringing it back in the interim, is there going to be a policy developed or not?
Naming committee is planning, not specifically discussed, to discuss Rosedale, but to have a recommendation around these sorts of things. And then when it comes back, by then, the board would have seen what that process or policy, if it's determined that its policy is, and then can apply it at that time.
Okay, then my question is, why is that not clearly stated?
In the motion?
I think I'm kind of with Dr. Nguyen on this one. If the board is wanting it to go to the naming committee to develop a policy, I think they should do that.
But it's not Rosedale. Naming committee was already discussing this, and they're generically making a process and policy around some other things that are already there. So instead of them discussing this specifically, whatever they create will be applicable to Rosedale. So they're, it's not, like, they're not saying, oh, this is what it will be for Rosedale. They're saying, when we're honoring things.
Yeah, just, just so I'm clear then on what the naming committee is doing, because I'm, maybe I'm not sure. I know that the board had previously directed a couple of specific items, the, I think there was a street rename and something else, if I recall correctly. Whereas this seems to be a little bit different. And I, I'm not saying that that's not okay. I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding what you guys are actually doing.
Within one of those was an actual fixture for a parking spot. And so just not having a, I hear what you're saying, but I, but hmm.
So how about this? How about we vote on this motion to bring this item back to a future board meeting? Ms. Smith, can we, if we're okay to move to that, and then we'll get back to the naming committee if that's acceptable? Ms. Smith, roll call on the substitute motion in front of us.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Now, Mr. Gohein, are we okay legally?
I think, I think right now, all you're doing is you're taking this one off of the agenda for tonight and moving it to a future agenda. So I think you're all right right now in terms of what you're doing.
Okay. Yes.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
I will vote yes, but I sure believe we should have motions that are clearer than this one. I'll vote yes.
Okay, so that item will be brought back at a future board meeting. Now, do we need to do that by motion, Mr. Gohein, to send that to the naming committee or can it just be via consensus?
I think it might be cleanest.
Okay.
That way, everybody on the board is on the same page about what's happening. I think that...
I'd entertain a motion to have the naming committee to take up the conversation of the nameplates and at Rosedale Middle School and recognition to help develop a process in the conversations with the other.
Second.
At Rosedale, though, all, like, all process.
All schools, right. So I'd entertain a motion to, to send this to the, this item around the process of honoring community and staff at schools to the naming committee.
Second.
So Ms. Russell will make the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I second it.
Ms. Humphries has seconded. Additional questions? Saying none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
And carries, thank you. Okay. Board, next on the agenda, item number 10. With us, we have a guest with us tonight, Mr. Sean Miller, who is joining us via Zoom. Mr. Miller, Sean, thank you for joining us. Thank you for being patient with us. And tonight, we have a conversation on our... Okay. So, Mr. Miller...
I appreciate it. I never thought people would be excited to hear from their lobbyists, but after that, maybe they will be. So...
You have come at a great time. Mr. Miller, we're actually going to make you wait just a little bit longer because we love you that much. We're going to actually take a brief recess to give folks a quick time to stretch. Board, we will reconvene in eight minutes. Thank you. I think we're gonna come back together. Thanks for letting us take a quick break. Mr. Miller, thank you for your patience and for sticking with us. We continue to be excited to hear from you even after the break. So thank you for joining us, board, tonight. In front of you, hopefully you had a chance to look at our legislative platform that we currently have. Tonight, Mr. Miller is gonna give a quick update on what's going on in the legislature. And we do have the opportunity to also look at our own legislative priorities and our platform. The hope is to adopt our new legislative platform for this next year before December 6th, when, so in our November board meeting to potentially bring back a final draft based on the conversation or feedback that we get tonight. So, Mr. Miller, thank you for joining us tonight, and I will open the floor to you.
Mr. Lopez, thank you, board. We have got a long ways to go and a short time to get there here. You heard Dr. Nguyen earlier talk about four days of education this week. We also have a state Board of Ed meeting today, as well as an at-risk, or excuse me, a K-12 funding legislative post audit. So I'm gonna try to cover as much of that as I can in the next few minutes, and then perhaps most importantly, leave time for your questions. Want to make sure we address what you really want to know, as opposed to just hearing me talk at you. But we did want to talk a little bit about the last four days of the Special Committee on Education, and particularly and notably, as you heard Dr. Nguyen mention earlier today, the items where Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools were mentioned. And so I'm just gonna kind of take these in order really quickly if I can. Number one, I think many of you know there was a legislative post audit study a month or so ago that related to at-risk funding, and really, it was about legal compliance. I think if you've talked to the state board, or you've heard from the state board, the state board will tell you that the statutory requirements for compliance, probably not doable, they simply don't make sense in statute. And it's my take, maybe not the board's, that because of that, the Board of Ed has allowed schools to do some things that in a strict interpretation of the law might not meet the statute. I think they're certainly well within the intent of the statute, but when it talks about peer reviewed and the amount of time that things have to be peer reviewed, et cetera. So Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, along with a lot of the other bigger urban schools, as you might imagine, sort of called out in that post audit. Kansas City, Kansas specifically was listed that 95% of their at-risk dollars were used for salaries and benefits, and it cited that Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools was about 38% compliant with state statutes in, in their spending of those at-risk dollars. I mentioned that not because it's, you know, true, or that you guys are wasting money by any means, but because I think it's gonna be a big point of contention. There's gonna be a lot of discussion about it in the upcoming session in both the education and the K-12 committees. And in fact, we've heard about, a lot about it over the last three or four legislative days as well. So at-risk funding and the appropriate spending of that is probably item number one for us. Number two is building need assessments. As you know, that's a relatively recently passed law for boards of education to do building needs assessments to determine what the needs are in each of their facilities throughout the district. This is one of those ones where the Kansas Policy Institute, who I'm sure you're all familiar with, submitted a lot of testimony on. If you have an extra 30 minutes in your week sometime this week, you might go back and listen to Craig Nuenswander's report at the end of the state board meeting today, where he did what I'm attempting to do. Originally, on that schedule that day, we were, of course, scheduled to be done by 5:00, and at 6:00 or 6:15, we still hadn't gotten to this agenda item yet. And the chairwoman at that time said, well, we heard about this earlier, so we don't need to hear about it anymore. In fact, what we'd heard was KPI's report on it, but KASB and the State Board of Ed were supposed to address it as well, and they did not get a chance to address it. So what we heard from KPI was that school districts are sort of wantonly, willfully ignoring this statute. And in fact, stated that Kansas City, Kansas, along with nine others, Wichita, Blue Valley, Dodge City, Liberal, et cetera, were specifically prohibiting their local school boards from being involved in their building needs assessments. So I didn't know if you guys were aware that you were being prohibited from looking at the needs of your school buildings, but that is what was stated in open testimony last week. I think the reality of it is, and I know this is what Wichita Public Schools stated in the meeting when they were asked to speak on a different topic, is you have 50-plus buildings. If you individually, as a seven-member board, are required to go in and complete a building assessment for all 56, whatever buildings you have in the facility, you couldn't complete that in a single year. So in fact, what most school boards do is charge their staff with terminating the needs, bringing that to the board, allowing the board to evaluate that and approve that. So, but there will continue to be some discussion of that, because there are in fact, some very small, primarily very small, school boards who are doing, actively doing their needs assessments on perhaps their one or two buildings. And so that is the way that KPI believe, believes that the statute reads, and so they are gonna continue, I believe, to, to bang that drum. So I think you're gonna continue to hear things about the building needs assessments. And the assessments themselves are critical, I think, because being able to address and target money to the areas of needs in different parts of the community is critical. And in fact, we heard that today, because today Legislative Post Audit released a study on K-12 funding, where I think you're gonna see a lot, maybe in the, in the paper over the next day or two, as people suss out what Post Audit said. Their, their headline statement was, more money does not necessarily mean better outcomes. And what they, if you dig into that a little bit, what they said was, for example, we give every school an extra 10%. If they just increase every budget line item they have by 10%, then we do not expect to see a significant increase in state assessments. On the other hand, if you give them 10% and they target that very specifically at math opportunities and training, at readings through the letters program, some of those things, and even at perhaps teacher raises to help retain and attract better teachers, then you will in fact, see significant increases in the assessment scores of students. They did say, one of the things that they did say critical, that would be important to USD 500, is that more funding specifically impacts in a greater way disadvantaged students. And they define disadvantaged students as those students on free lunch, or those students who are ESL students. So of course, by the time we had gotten back downstairs from the fifth floor to the first floor, where the Special Committee on Education met, the chairwoman, who also serves on Post Audit, said, hey, we just got an audit, and it just says, we don't need more money, because money doesn't equal outcomes. And I don't believe, that's what I heard. In fact, I believe they said, just throwing blanket money at something may not achieve the results you want, but in fact, targeting extra money into schools in areas of need will result in significant increase in, in assessment scores. And they actually highlighted that a couple of times, but the Special Committee on Education didn't particularly hear that, I don't think. So we have a lot to do on an education front on that committee, and we will, we will continue to have that. A few other things that we've heard over the last couple of weeks that I think are really critical, that I think are gonna get a lot of play, and I do in fact, think our real issues is absenteeism. There was a significant statement in the Post Audit today as well, that students that have chronic absenteeism, shockingly, don't do it as well. So if you're not in the classroom, learning from the people who are paid to teach you, you are probably not learning as much. So I think there'll be a big effort statewide this year to try to deal with chronic absenteeism. This is not something that's plaguing Kansas City, Kansas, or the state of Kansas more than anywhere else. There have been three or four national articles this year, or this week, I'm sorry, describing the same issues in Ohio and in Florida and Texas. I think a lot of it is still related to the COVID pandemic and some work at home and stay at home and learn at home, as well as simply keeping people at home for 10 to 14 days if they were exposed to something. So I gotta break out of that cycle and get people back again. I will tell you that one of the things that we're gonna critically watch this year when we get into 2024, there was really no discussion in the Special Committee on this the last four days, is this is the first year that we will have been, and by we, I mean Kansas K-12 Education, fully funded per the Gannon decision, and this will be the first year that we will get the full CPI adjustment that is part of the Gannon settlement and that is currently in state statute. We have heard a lot of talk, rhetoric, whatever you want to describe it as, the last few days, about how schools have more money than they need. And I believe there will be some attempts to perhaps change the CPI, adjust the CPI, eliminate the CPI. That's sort of one of my personal biggest issues this year, because I think it has tremendous impacts on, on all of our public schools, but particularly our larger public schools. We know there's been a 20-plus% CPI essentially over the last four or five years, and that's had a really tremendous impact. The other things that we're gonna talk about a lot is, is sped funding. If Dr. Nguyen can correct me if she believes I'm wrong here, but what I've heard over the last couple of days in particular is, number one, and this is accurate, students are receiving all of the sped services they're supposed to receive. So that is being paid for. That is accurate. It's a federal requirement to pay for those sped procedures and, but what's happening is that money is being transferred out of the school's general fund to backfill the money that the feds and the state are not providing as they're supposed to. So there's gonna be, I think, an effort to try to change the calculation or the equation of sped. Right now, you have to be funded at 92% of excess costs. I anticipate there will be some ability to try to count some LOB money, which is, depending on who you talk to, perhaps some double counting, but that's gonna be a really heavy issue as well. And then I'll run through two or three things that they're gonna talk about a little bit more as well. Homelessness, which is a critical issue for a number of our urban schools in particular, but even a growing issue for some of our rural schools. They really harped today a little bit on whether or not schools were providing transportation, whether they were doing the appropriate tracking and reporting so that they understand exactly what the homeless students are dealing with. And we have a whole separate homeless day, interim day, another committee that will meet later this year, and I think we'll talk about that at that time. One of the other things we're gonna talk about is student headcount. As you may remember from this last year, the governor sort of, interestingly, line item vetoed a portion of the school finance formula that would have changed the headcount from the previous two years, whichever of those two years you wanted to use, to last year or the current year. That obviously is a big impact to students that have decline, or school districts that have declining enrollment, because two years ago, their headcount would be bigger. Our legislative committee talks about those as phantom students, but the reality is, they passed that so late this last year, it would have been very, very difficult for schools to deal with that last-minute budget cut that rural and declining schools would have been dealt with. So, so that'll be, come back up again as well. And then one thing to keep on our mind, they talked about quite a bit today, is disposition of school property. This is really something that's come up in the vein of rural schools. There's been three rural districts in the last year and a half that have closed down a high school and sort of consolidated into another area. As, as anybody who's ever closed a school or talked about closing a school knows, nobody in that neighborhood is excited by that prospect. They want their kids to go to school closed. They want their kids to be right there where they were. But because of that, they passed a bill this last year, Senate Bill 113, that essentially says, if you close a school, the state gets first dibs on taking that building. So I, I think that's one of those things that even for big schools, is they look about rightsizing things, moving multiple elementary schools into one newer, bigger facility. We need to keep in mind that they may be looking at a disposition of school property and whether or not the state should have the ability to take over that facility. And there's no limitation on potentially what they could do that for. So I'm, I'm gonna try to close this all back in the loop on that with, most of the recommendations they came up with today was, we can fix all of these problems if students simply have more school choice. If we can start private schools, or if we can fund private schools with state dollars, or as the chairwoman likes to talk about, microschools, sort of the return of the one-room schoolhouse. But there have been some rumblings about, well, if some of these schools, and we'll talk about Wilson, Kansas, because that's one of the rural schools that did it, perhaps we'll take their high school and we'll turn it into one of these private microschools, and we can in fact, provide a private school in the place where you chose to close a public school and keep those students in their same building, in their same community. So it's gonna be a really busy year. It always is. You guys have a huge job. You know all the moving pieces that are there, but we're gonna continue to have a fair amount of discussion about this as we move forward. There have been, if any of you like social media tiffs a little bit, a number of people really pushing for the special ed task force that Chairwoman Kristi Williams stumped for on the House floor this year and talked about how critical it was. That committee has not yet been called, and there was some indication perhaps of the last day or two that maybe it didn't need to be called. There are certainly some growing calls, both at the state board level, from the chairwoman there, who serves on the sped task force, as well as a number of other legislators to, to in fact, try to get Representative Williams, Chairwoman Williams, to call that committee and have a full-fledged, robust sped discussion. So I talked more than I'm intended to there. I typically do, my apologies. But more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Sean. Open the floor up to any questions, Ms. Page.
Yes. Will there ever be a discussion? They hold public schools to a certain standard, but with these charter and private schools, will they ever hold them to the same accountability as they do the public schools? Is that ever a conversation?
It is pretty consistently a conversation from the folks who I think would be affiliated with public schools. If you choose to do this, R, do, A, do they have to be accredited? I don't know how many times we've talked about accreditation. And B, are they gonna have to take and be held to the same standards? So it, it's something that gets brought up almost every meeting. It sort of gets pushed aside as they talk about current assessment results and level ones and level twos. So, you know, they sort of try to shove it under the rug by saying, well, why should we hold them accountable? Because public schools, by and large, are failing students. I don't know that I agree with that assessment, but I think Dr. Nguyen might agree with me there. That's typically how that conversation goes in committee. Not putting her on the spot to, to answer, but she's heard that as many or more times than I have. So it is, it is a significant discussion, Ms. Page. We talk about it all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions?
Well, I'll make a comment. Look forward always to working with Sean as one of the important education lobbyists. Sean, I don't know if you Sean, I don't know if you were in the room when Senator Baumgartner went on her tirade about the needs assessment. But for the board's information, I clarified clearly, as I did the year before with former Speaker O'Neill, that US 500 Board did participate in reviewing the needs assessments. Now, Sean, what I need you to do is to quote what KPI's testimony said. And this is where I didn't say a word because I couldn't counter that if, 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 if he, when he finds it, my memory says, KPI was told when he contacted USD 500 that someone told him the Board of Education did not conduct the needs assessments. And that's, that's correct. Is that what it says?
So his testimony, I actually, I'm, I'm proud of myself here. I had cut and pasted this, so it's right here, ready for me.
Okay, good.
Ten districts, Wichita, Kansas City, Blue Valley, Dodge City, Liberal, Pittsburgh, Gary County, Lansing, Manhattan, and Newton openly admitted that board members were not allowed to participate.
Participate.
That is the quote from the testimony.
Yeah. So I, I shut them down, but if you know KPI, they just keep coming back. What's the other, when do the, did they, did they release the assessments today in the committee?
They did release them today. I don't know that they dropped the actual numbers. They talked about significant increases. Now, on the other hand, I was so proud that I had copied and pasted the first part. Now I am scrambling.
Okay. Did they provide the link?
I, I believe I can get you the link, yes. So they, they actually talked about them because they were going to release them at the state board. And I was trying to bounce in back and forth between the two. And I'm not sure that I have got the numbers here, but there were a significant increase across the board, quite frankly, in the state over the last year.
Okay. Well, I'm sure Dr. Stubblefield has them. But when you get them, would you send them to, to Dr. Stubblefield, Ms. Smith?
Absolutely.
Thank you. See you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Thank you, Sean. Additional comments or questions for Sean?
I do just want to clarify something. When KPI reached out to us, we did not respond. So I'm not sure where their quote is coming from. As many other districts, they did cora information and we provided that information, but we did not talk to them directly nor respond to their questions. But we did respond to the core request.
Thank you. There are no other comments or questions for Sean. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for joining us tonight. Board, another piece of discussion tonight is regarding our legislative agenda, which you should have in front of you in the agenda. Based on, you know, the conversations that we've continued to have and what's on our legislative agenda, now would be an opportunity, if there are things that you want to see additionally on this agenda, on this document, or things that are missing, or things that you don't feel should be on there, this would be an appropriate time to have that conversation and feedback so that staff can then pull this together and get us a, an updated version. Or would open the floor if there are any comments or feedback on the current legislative agenda as it's presented?
So I guess my question is really around, or my feedback or thought processes around the KISA report and all of the discussions we've had around diploma plus. Is that a Board of Education thing and not so much a legislative piece? And I'm speaking specifically to the not recognizing the other areas as items outside of military, associate's degree, so the client connected projects, those post-secondary pieces?
That's KSDE and accreditation. And legisla, and so over the course of the last several years, the lines have been blurred. They used to be distinctly clear, like KSDE around accreditation, around what's best for kids. There weren't so many laws where the legislator was heavily involved. So that's not legislation. That's really KSDE. Any recommendations around expanding that or looking at that? I can share with like Commissioner Watson and his team as they look at it. But the legislation doesn't have anything to do with that.
And I guess my follow-up to that is, is this the only opportunity? Because I would like to go back to the KISA report and review kind of some of those summary pieces to make sure we're not missing parts. I see it says prioritize funding for parents as teachers, infant toddlers, but I, special education. Like it has all that some, but like we need some direct statements related to some of learning loss, some of the not, like early childhood, I feel like should be its own statement based on what we know, what we've experienced, and not all lumped in to these pieces. And I'm not arguing that all of these things shouldn't be just as valuable. But I think using the data, the reports, all of the things, early childhood is something that we have to, to be blowing the horn about even more so all of these other things because we know that that impacts our kids at a disproportionate rate than all of the others. So I guess that's where it's really hard for me right now to put all of those together. But I think we have got to be more specific in some of these.
So this is not your only time. At any time, you can send something to myself and Francisco because he puts this together for the board. And then we can provide updates either in the end of the week and bring it back at the November meeting. We can also put it on the agenda for you if you have things for the October meeting. We're just asking for a final approval at the November meeting because the Wanda County Legislative Breakfast is December 6th. So we like to have it finalized so that we can share it at that time.
Correct. And I guess the only other thing that I would have, given what we heard from Sean tonight with regard to homelessness, I believe that committee is meeting on November 7th. But when we talk about supporting Medicaid services, the direct impact to individuals or families who are experiencing homelessness, who don't have access to Medicaid, like those specific things, so the arguments that are being made, how do we correlate those to what we currently have and being more explicit about those things? So it is coming out the gate. When we're talking about K-12 education and homelessness, we're talking about, well, we need Kansas to expand Medicaid because of its impact. And this is how we know because for Kansas families, this is what it looks like. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. And I am in full support of any support that we can give Medicaid expansion because this state desperately needs to do that for our citizens and residents. Any other feedback?
And it also impacts special ed, being able to bill Medicaid for services.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Additional comments or thoughts on, on this? This will come back before the board, again, at a future board meeting, at an upcoming board meeting, and for potential adoption at the November board meeting. But now and then, we continue to have opportunities to add to this if we feel so inclined to do so. If there are no other comments at this time, we will continue with our agenda. And we are at Agenda Item Number 11 under New Business Board. These are for informational purposes only. So are there any questions about either Items A or B? Well, we'll start with Item A, 11A Solicitation For Bids. Any questions on this item? None. Next agenda item. Are there any item, or any questions or comments on Item B, the Public Library MOU? I know some questions have, have been sent in to Dr. Stubblefield. Responses to those questions are in the Board Library, but if there are additional questions.
And then I just want to share, I did share any recommended changes with Greg. You all would have seen those in the Board Library and he can respond and/or make the adjustments if that's the will of the full board.
The last thing I was going to add, I did not share it beforehand, but I did mention it to Greg is, item, I think on the KCKPS or the Foundation Side Letter E and F, it talks about the solicitation of capital campaign dollars as well as the point beforehand talks about 20 million as it relates to this specific project or the specific building, a new main library. And I wondered if it actually made sense for it to be in this document because if this is a longstanding MOU, should it not have language that's with? I, I don't really know what the language should be, but do we want to have specifications related to specific projects in an MOU agreement? Is this MOU just for the creation of a main library? Or is it for longstanding relationships and why do we have those things? So it was proposed language. And so again, it's something I can go back to and then follow up with Greg at a later time when I can have a little bit more time.
Yeah. So Greg?
Greg, excuse me. Go ahead.
No, I was just saying Greg has all of that in, you can go.
Greg, did you ever find the language of the original, for lack of a better word, taxing document?
I have not located that yet. I, I have looked for it, but I have not been able to locate it yet.
Well, do we need to file an open records request if you can't find it? It has to be in, it has to be someplace. Perhaps you haven't had time to find it?
No, I just haven't been able to locate it. I have looked. I know that we've got the, the resolutions from the school district side, but I've not been able to locate anything specific as it relates to UG or the library, the county library board. So the only thing I've got.
Do you have, do you have access to the UG records?
To the same extent everybody else does. So I mean, like to the extent there's ordinances or old ordinances, which is how they would be passed or old agendas. So we can try and track it down through an open records request if we need to.
Have you spoken to legal at the UG?
Yes.
And they can't find it?
It's not been able to be located.
But they tax every, every day. Okay. Well, I asked this in my questions. It was my understanding that there was not a design decided upon. However, it's been brought to my attention that the, that the members, a few members of the advisory committee are circulating design. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that this is premature. Greg, is that correct?
I, I don't, I don't, anybody's, I'm not aware.
I have evidence that they are solicit, they are.
My, my understanding, and I, I haven't seen anything personally, my understanding.
You wouldn't see this. You don't, you live in KCK.
My understanding is that some of the early renditions that were put together have been shown. I'm not aware of anything that has been developed since those early renditions has been shown.
Yeah. And so I did, in the response to the questions, those things have been shared publicly multiple times. And I know that committee members have them and they are rendering similar to any, like we showed them here publicly September 22nd when Garcia Architect was here. And I, you go back and look at some previous board meetings before I arrived. So they've been, different people have been on the committee, different people have had access to it. And I don't know what capacity they're showing them, but they were renderings of if you built a library that looks like this, here's how much it would cost. Now, I, I don't know what people are saying, but I do know that they've been in multiple places with, in public meetings. Those committee meetings are open. So I, there are a variety of people that may be there. And if committee members are sharing those specifically, I don't know if they were ever told that they could not share the information. But I don't know what context they are being shared in either.
The context is that this is the new library that we are presenting to be proposed to build. Now, we asked last, well, let's put it like this. The discussion, an answer was provided to us that they were going to solicit money, did not have an idea of what it looked like. I'll, I'll frame it like that, not to violate any, any rules.
And so I think to clarify that, as a collective, they don't. But if I'm in a meeting and that's my interpretation and this is what I want, because someone is showing it does not mean that that is what this board or the library committee has committed to. So I don't doubt, like if you're saying that and you know that, so it's probably true. But that is, those individuals who are doing it, that's their interpretation and their perspective. But it's not what this board or Miss Levers have said, this is what we are wanting. It was the original rendering from Garcia Architect.
I would really appreciate us having some internal conversation. So thank you very much. I do not think this is appropriate and I will continue to express the view that the Board of Education, this board, who has the authority collectively, is being, there's some misspeaking going on. So thank you. In my opinion. So no one can get, say that I said somebody lied.
Additional questions or comments on the Agenda Item 11B, the Library MOU? Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 12, Policy Board before us. We have several policies. The first policy up is, or a second read, this was tabled at the previous board meeting, the changes to the acceptable usage policy. So I will hand this off to Mr. Goheen.
So I believe it was tabled last time because we had some confusion about which versions were up there. There are two versions that are in the board docs. The first version is the original version that was put up for the first read. The second version is a version that had some modified language based on some comments by Ms. Russell, was at least an attempt to address some of those comments. So rather than having us try to decide, I think the board needs to decide which direction you want us to move forward in terms of what the second read looks like or whether you want additional language changes made before we get to a third read for final adoption for the acceptable use.
So what's the difference between the two versions?
So if you look at the second version and you scroll, I think it's down to the bottom. Make sure I got to the right spot.
In the purple ink?
In the purple language. So the, the original changes to the current acceptable use policy are in red. Those are consistent from both versions of the policy. Purple language at the bottom of the last page, I guess, what's actually the top of the last page.
Okay. So the difference between the two is the first one says, "Staff shall not use any personal device to take photographs or video recordings of any student." Correct?
Yes, that's what it says.
And the other alternate version is, "Staff shall restrict use of any personal device to take photographs or video recordings of." of any personal device to take photographs or video recordings of students to class or to school-related activities only. Once the image or recording is no longer necessary to support the purpose of the educational activity, staff should remove it from their device," correct?
That's what it says, yes.
Okay, so, going back to the first one where it says, "Staff will not use personal devices." Is this a common acceptable use policy and other districts also?
I don't know how common it is. I think that a lot of districts have in their acceptable use that you're supposed to be using district devices to record activities, to record events, things of that nature, rather than personal devices. The problem that comes up when you're using a personal device for work-related activities is that information on that personal device can be argued to then be essentially property or records of the school district. So, you start blurring the line between what is your personal device you're using for your personal purposes and what you're using as a district device for, you know, job-related activities. That becomes potentially more complicated when you are using that personal device in connection with students who may or may not have, be consenting, or parents who may not, may or may not be consenting to how their images are captured or taken care of. That's the concern that's being addressed here. Ultimately, what you guys want it to look like is a board decision. I'm just laying out what some options are.
So, if I remember correctly, we discussed this before, we said that all staff have been issued iPads, is that correct?
Correct.
And our schools have cameras? Like, our high school and middle school students have access to cameras if they're covering events? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, and the iPads, okay, I have a tablet at home, but I've never used the camera on it. So, iPads, they have the ability to take pictures of what's going on in the classroom, et cetera. The same thing as if they were using their own personal device. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, we're furnishing our staff with district devices to document learning and experiences with our students. So, they really do not need to be using their personal devices for that, that activity. Once they use their personal device, then the district has access to everything on that device? Potentially?
Potentially, at least the argument can be made. I mean, I think people still have a privacy interest in their personal device, so I don't want to overstate that. I think that the argument can be made down the road, depending upon if a situation goes wrong, lack of a better word, that an argument can be made that, that information stored on that personal device is actually includes student records and student information, which would be school district property.
And just to clarify, potentially if something went wrong, their personal device could be subpoenaed.
That's, that's what I'm, okay. So, also, if it's the pictures of the students in the classroom, et cetera, are on a school district device, it does not go home with the employee? It stays in possession?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's true, because I know that, I know that devices are used by staff at, at events that are not in the school buildings, for example.
So, if the staff, staff takes their devices home, laptops, iPads. I mean, if there are an event and they are responsible for the cameras, the cameras, it all follows them. So, yeah.
I guess I am in favor of keeping it, that staff should not use personal devices, because I'm thinking as a parent, it is one thing for pictures to be taking, taken using the iPad or the school camera and things being shared that way. It's another, if a staff member is taking pictures of my kids and they're taking it home with them and it's on their personal device that I have no control over, that their relative, if their phone gets lost, it, I have no control over where my kid's pictures are. So, that, that's, that is, that is my recommendation on the policy.
Ms. Clark?
I just need some help with this policy. So, the second line to me, from the way I read it, and I don't, I know it doesn't mean to be this way, it contradicts the first line. So, once the image or recording is no longer necessary, but it's still referencing the personal device, so.
So, it's two versions, the first version, it's not there, it doesn't give them the option of the personal device. The second version is saying, if you use your personal device, you no longer, once it's not needed, you need to get rid of it. So, and I do, I'm just, just for clarity and give people time to think about it, you can't accept both of them versions tonight? And then when you come back to vote, you vote, you can vote on whoever makes the motion, similar to other things, whichever one passes, yeah.
Or if there's additional language change that you guys would like.
Like, you don't, today, unless there's more specific feedback, you don't have to make a determination. You can just vote and see where it falls between the two.
Okay. My only other question slash comment, and you all are smarter at this than I am, is what does this really protect us from? Like, there's pictures of our students online, there's pictures of our students. If you want a picture of a student, there's pictures of our students all over. So, I do understand, like, the protecting of our student from a personal device stance, but I'm just gonna find the hole in this. If I email this to myself, you didn't tell me I couldn't, I mean, it's a-
Yeah, so it really protects the district in the sense that the district has a policy if something happens and somebody had it on their personal device. It's really limiting the liability. And I, I think the very first read we talked about, it protects the district in that, that the policy, that's what the policy outlines. Yeah, so, yeah, like, every law, every policy, intentionally or unintentionally, people find loopholes and/or not knowingly. Honestly, nobody's walking around with all the policies in their head. And so, sometimes they don't know that they're violating it until it's brought to their attention.
Okay, my very last, I promise, comment is I also don't, so I think about our sports and the people that are out there on the fields. I don't want to make their job overly complicated to be able to take care of students and capture those moments. So, I think my ask would be just making sure that we have, social media is big. And so, just making sure that our staff has access to what they need to be able to capture those moments and be able to provide. So, I know you've thought about it, I just wanted to-
So, and that's why is both versions there? And then when it comes back, either one, staff will operationalize. We were just presenting both and so, you all can take time, reflect, get feedback from staff, and then vote accordingly when it comes back, yeah.
And are there different rules for public events like ballgames and concerts versus classroom?
It's not really different rules, they're all student-
This would apply to all of those events?
This would apply to anything that was involved with staff.
School sanctioned events, yeah.
Because I see a difference between pictures being taken of my student in the classroom while they're learning versus when they're at a public event, like a ballgame or a concert.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, that's where, like, no policy is gonna cover, it's not black and white. Like, if I'm there with my child and my child is on the team and I happen to be employee of the district and I post my child and their friends, like, there are blurred lines. So, that's why when it comes back, as you think about all of those scenarios, you should just vote on the policy that, that makes sense. And this will provide an opportunity, if you want to talk to staff, you can get staff input, but that-
Staff and community input.
But based on your example, by policy, if we had the first one, that individual, that employee would be violating the policy, which is board direction.
So, it's technically-
Legally speaking.
If they're on duty.
Oh.
No, because the policy doesn't say duty.
If they're at a ballgame and the audience is apparent.
You are still a staff of this district.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's current. So, if you want to play with the language, you can, but I'm not investing all that energy into this, because that's not that, this is not the high list. But that is essentially what that says.
So.
And that's something, I mean, again, from a policy language standpoint, if you got, if that's a concern, we can make additional proposed language to address. Doesn't apply if you're taking pictures of your own kids. I think that was not the intent of the policy, but that's certainly something that could be added to it.
So, I mean, you can-
Is it your kid, is it the cousin, is that really your cousin?
Accept it and we can come back and you can vote.
And I'm perfectly fine with that. I think the only thing I will add to this is, or my only comment slash question mark, and we can talk about this later, is where does social media? Like, how many, when you see kids on, on employees' social media pages, on their personal pages or videos, like, what, how does that tie into this? Or does that even need to be talked about?
I think that would be prohibited by this policy of you posting out a student on your personal social media page, is what I think the intent of this would be.
Okay, I just wanted to-
Whether that's what you want to do or not is a board decision, but that is intent.
Where do you interpret that at?
You shouldn't have access to it?
I have to read through it, but I think it says electronic communications on the email.
It says-
I'd have, I'd have-
School-related activities.
But I, I think that is part of the intent, is that having the, the image of a student or maintaining the image of a student on your personal device or personal social media page or account, I think that that is part of the intent of this acceptable use policy, because you're getting access to these students by virtue of the fact that you're an employee of the school district and you're in a, you know, your potential relationship with that student can be very good or can be very problematic and you are in a position of power and authority with that student. And so, that is the concern that is being brought up with this policy is to make sure we've got some guardrails in place to protect the school district from, from situations where that might not be an appropriate thing to have happen.
So, I, I just want to be clear, there will be gray. There will be different interpretations. But for the purposes of this evening, you can accept both of them and then vote on whichever one you believe should move forward. Yes.
I was gonna say, in the essence of time, I make a motion that we accept too.
Second.
Moved in seconded, questions or further discussion? The only other, like, just feedback in terms, as I'm thinking about it again, with social media, as we continue to encourage our staff and students to use different forms of mediums in their learning, like, how, how will this potentially impact? And so, I think there's a lot still to work through. And as we, as a district, think about real-world learning opportunities, diploma plus, some of those outside things that happen, how do, how do we blend the two so that we're not in violation of policy but still encouraging that creativity and that use of technology and, and everything else that we're asking our staff to do, but then putting guardrails around, so.
And I think to your point, it goes even as far as partners. So, when we have partners posting photos of what they're doing in our district, like, I want the rules to apply to everyone and if that's what we're gonna do, we need to make sure that it doesn't just stop at our staff, it goes all the way through. So, if you're going to post photos of the opportunity we're having at your job, you need to, A, make us aware, allow us the opportunity to preview the photos. So, I think that's my overall issue, is that this in implementation is a struggle for me to see on so many levels. And to your point, I am, I've got some feedback. Our athletics, some of our club sponsors, they do not have access to iPads or cameras are in the photography department. And so, I want to make sure that we are certain, because it is easy to leave certain groups out because they don't have a big club or communications doesn't come out to their event. So, like, how do they still share their work? So, thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next policy is policy JBC. Greg, I don't know if you want to take both JBC and JBCC together or individually?
I think we should take JBC and JBCC together. I know they're on, off, off reads in terms of, I think JBC might have gotten adopted for first read back in July and I don't think JBCC did. But either way, these are the two policies that relate to the change in the statute for open enrollment. And so, we have KASB's policy. I've spent some time talking, not just with administration, but also with KSDE and with other school districts in terms of what concerns have been out there with, with some of the gatekeeping function that we may or may not want to have in place. And so, you'll see that I've made modifications in red to the proposed policy from KAS, KASB. Primarily, I've, I've focused on a couple of different things. One is making it clear that if, if we're accepting individuals into the district, that they have to be in good standing, they can't be, have a pending suspension or expulsion and be admitted into the district, because there's a separate statute that allows for that. The other thing is, I've labeled it as, they have to be qualified for programs or grade levels or school buildings as they come in, rather than simply being able to come in and select on their own and that the discretion to have individual students who are non-residents who are admitted into the district for enrollment purposes, that the placement of that student is still at the discretion of school district administration here, rather than dictated by the parent or guardians wishes as to where they go. That allows us to account for capacity needs within the school district. That allows us to have individuals being placed in programs or at grade levels as appropriate, as determined by our staff and faculty, as opposed to being predetermined coming into the district. And I think that's important as you maintain control of the district as a whole. Some of the other things that I'm not necessarily included in here, but other districts have looked at is what are the, what are you dictating as capacity issues? The way I went at this is to leave that capacity determination to administration. Capacity is going to be reported back to the Board in May when they do the capacity studies or determinations. I think you want flexibility in allowing administration to sort out what is meant by capacity, rather than dictating it on the front end from the board level at this point or juncture. We do have to have this in place by January, which does mean that we do need to adopt this as a first read tonight, both of these, or second read if it's for, for JBC. And then, if there are changes or additional places the Board wants us to look at, we can make those revisions, but at the next meeting, we will set this or schedule this for a public hearing. So, two weeks out from the next board meeting, we will have to publish this for a public hearing, hold a public hearing on it so that we are in a position to adopt this in the December meeting and be in compliance with the state statute. So, that's the timeline we have here. But this is a very important policy and if there are places that you guys want us to take a look at or have concerns to the best we can, this is, this is our chance to try to get this right. Again, I think Dr. Stubblefield has said this two or three times, we don't know how this is gonna play out and won't know. we don't know how this is going to play out, and won't know until next fall. And we know whether we have students who are leaving for other districts as a result of this, or students that are trying to come in because of this. So getting this right is important.
So you, you just said that it's district enrollment, not a specific building. So if I'm a non-resident parent with a non-resident student, I can't come in and say, I want my student only to go to school A.
The way, the way we have crafted the policy, that is correct.
Okay.
There could be a statutory interpretation or argument that it's by school, but I think the way I, I read the statute, I think it was designed to let the district control who attends. The district still has control over who attends what buildings within the school district. And I, I think that if you have resident students within the school district, they should be allowed to transfer to vacant positions within the district before non-residents should be allowed to do so. The board disagrees with that, I'll, I'll change that aspect of the policy. The other part of that, that I think becomes very important is, I, I think if you're enrolling as a non-resident student in the school district, that doesn't give you an entitlement to go to a particular school, or to be at a particular grade level, or to be at a particular program. I think those are determinations that your educational staff should make, based upon the needs of your district, the capacity of different levels, and, and the individual attributes of the students involved. I mean, you might have a student who's been placed in, you know, third grade by a district. He comes into our district, and, and based upon age, or based upon educational attainment, he more appropriately belongs in second grade. That should be a decision our educators make for the students, not somebody else, in my opinion. But that, again, is up to the board.
Uh, Greg, I agree with you, but I think that was not the legislative intent, but you, someone needs to probably circle back and talk to Craig Newenswander before December 8th. He retires, that, that timeframe. So, you know, we can come up with any policy we decide.
Right.
But be aware that, that the, if, if one digs too deeply in the, the language, then it may suggest otherwise, but I, I suggest you speak at the high levels.
Yeah. And there, there are also, you know, districts that are looking at the issue of current students who are enrolled as non-resident students, and whether their grandfather did, or whether they have to reapply along with the other students in the lottery system that the state law dictates. So I left that out, but I know some districts-
Yeah. Because if, if the student is of a parent that works in the district, they do not have to go through the lottery.
Uh, they, they, under some of the interpretations by some of the bodies that are looking at, they think they have to go into the lottery. So I left it silent, but-
Yeah, because the language specifically says they do not. So, you know, folks are interpreting, you know, taking it to court, whatever, but-
I, I agree with you, by the way. I'm just saying that-
Yeah, well, say that first, because the rest of the board thinks I'm making stuff up.
No, I, I, I agree with you on that. But I, but there is some gray area in, in this that I don't think everything was accounted for or thought through when the statute was being published. And I will also say, for whatever it's worth, that although the bill is passed and enrolled, that the revised statute has still not changed the language in the statute. So we don't know exactly what the statutory language is going to look like yet.
Just no comments or questions on policy JBC, JBCC? Again, this isn't the last time. It will be before us, and JBC is for a second read, JBCC is a first read. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to accept policy JBC for a second read.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Questions?
So are we going to investigate?
Yeah, uh-
To make sure we're in accordance?
Yeah, Craig did chair at a recent superintendent's, and they have given guidance, and, but I'll confirm, but they are saying that you can establish caps by building, is what I heard.
Yeah, KSD, I, I've, I've had conversations with them, and my, my understanding, I don't want to speak for them, my understanding of their interpretation is consistent with, with what I'm saying, is that you're not, you still have control over transferring kids within your buildings in the school district. But is it a district enrollment, not a school-specific enrollment? Like, you could read the statute differently. I'm, I'm fairly confident we can defend that, but you guys need to understand you could read the statute differently. Everybody's trying to adopt policies that they think will meet the needs of their district. Obviously, that's not a concern if you're a single high school, or a single grade school, single middle school district out in Western Kansas. A little different when you're in a district that's got five high schools, and multiple middle schools, and multiple grade schools. So, you know, you have these unique aspects to districts that maybe are not readily accountable for in the, in the statutory language. So I think the question I would put to the board is, come up with a policy that fits what the district wants, and then we'll defend it, and if we end up being wrong about it, then we'll make changes at that point. But I think you want to put the policy in place that's going to fit the needs of this district and your students.
I, I respect what you're saying, but that's not how it's being marketed. Because people are thinking, hey, I can go to any school I want to go to. So I'm, that's all, I'm, that's all I keep hearing from some people. So I just want to make sure legally we cover ourselves.
The best we can.
Okay.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I'd entertain a motion to accept first read policy JBCC.
So moved.
Second.
Been seconded. Questions or further discussion? I think none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, on our agenda are some additional items, board, policy items. Board, I would just want to take the pulse of the board for the purposes of the time. We could table these for the next board meeting. We do have several executive sessions to go into, if that, if you're okay with that, or we can continue. These are for, at least the next two are for first read, but I just want to pause and-
I move, we table.
We can just table, I don't think-
Okay, table.
But, I'm going to get a pulse of the board.
Yes.
Is anyone opposed to tabling items D, E, and F? And for the, and these would come back at the next board meeting, if we're tabling them.
And can we move them up? I mean, can we at least look at, move, these are important. We keep, you know, we wait till the end, and then we have to cut it off. Why not move this up? It's supposed to be important. And I know we have a lot of other stuff, but I think we need to move it up so we can get it done.
Will do. Anyone else, anyone opposed to?
Can you tell me what's on the next agenda? My concern is, is that this was supposed to be the one meeting that we did the policy, and now we're going to put it on an agenda that already-
On the next agenda, the only report, we do the recognitions for employee of the month, student of the month, and the HR report is scheduled, but I was confirming with Ms. Devon, we had all the information. So that would be the only report if we don't push that one back. Then any new business items that were on there would be up for updates or approval, if they're ready to be done. We will not have an update from Hollis and Miller. The next one is in November. And then the library MOU, all of those things that were coming back will come back, but they can be adjusted, you can-
And we won't add any other policies to the agenda, just these?
Not unless the board asks. These are all brought forward because they were requested.
Will there be an academic report for the first?
That's in November. That's the November meeting.
So I will, unless there's strong opposition from the full board, we will table items D, E, and F, Ms. Smith, for the next board meeting. So if we could just place those on the October 24th board meeting. Thank you. And then our next agenda item, so we will, we reached the executive session, so I think we can dismiss staff who we're not a part of.
We can dismiss staff with the exception of Dr. Campbell and Mr. Lilly.
Okay, so, board, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of all parties involved under coma for five minutes, going in at 8:37, with Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Steve Lilly, and Mr. Goheen.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Smith, roll call.
I didn't hear who seconded the motion.
Clark, seconded.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Clark, seconded.
Okay, thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma for five minutes with the same people.
Moved by Janie.
Seconded.
Seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee, yes.
Rachel Russell. Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of parties involved under coma for five minutes with the same people.
Moved by Janie.
Seconded.
Seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Motion to recess to executive session for a consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for five minutes with the same people.
Still moved by Janie.
Second by Yolanda.
Moving seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
Still move.
Second.
Seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes, please.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.